Okay.
All right. It's five nineteen. Here's. Mary, can you?
I, I can hear you, yes.
All right.
There we go.
And now I can hear her.
Can you still hear us, Mary?
Yes, I can.
But now we can't hear you because that's the speaker's.
Cannot hear me?
Well, now your voice is.
We can hear you, but then everything we say is coming back really loud from your side.
Let me pick, I'm gonna switch to, can your voice change? I don't know.
Well, I can mute myself until I need to speak. How's that?
Okay, no, I switched you to my computer.
Okay.
Just so you may just have to talk kind of loud, okay?
Okay.
Can you guys hear anything from that? A little bit, Mary?
A, B, C, D, E, F, G. How did that sound?
Yeah, it's not coming through there. For mine.
I'm even ready with the speaker. Could she use? First.
Okay, try this now.
A, B, C, D, E, F.
Try again.
A, B, C, D, E, F, G. So Jeff's calling me now.
Not just them, now it's, now it's.
Jeff, are you calling me?
I am.
Okay.
Let's see if this works.
All right.
Now it seems to be working without the feedback.
Okay.
I want, we're gonna see if we could do it on. Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what?
What's happening is every time we say something, then in fifteen seconds later, it's coming back through your speaker. So we're gonna try and put you on my speaker phone.
Okay.
If that works. My speaker.
Okay. You have just a speaker on the phone that we can just set up here?
All right, you there?
Yes, I am.
She needs to mute her. Is that what it is?
Yes, and I gotta mute your computer.
Okay, okay.
That's all it is. So then we can probably just use this if she mutes her computer.
But then she has to.
She has to unmute to want to talk to us.
And the noise is coming through here coming back.
Let's get out of here, it's too.
So you can hear okay?
I can hear you, Jeff, but I muted my phone. She, if I want to.
Let's see, I do have her here, but.
I've done, I've done.
No, is your computer on mute?
If we go down here. Now my computer is on mute.
Yeah, that's better, that sounds good. Otherwise, we're getting echoes.
Okay. Okay, so let me. Should we try to go back to this? It's just fine.
I don't think so, because it cleared up.
Okay. Want to try? Can you hear us, Mary?
Yes, I can.
Of course, that's a problem on our side. We're getting feedback, everything we say is coming back, they're just talking over us.
Okay, cool. Well, we'll just start now. I just kind of think.
Okay, so we can talk, I won't just keep talking about.
I just turned it on.
All right, we'll give this a try. I didn't bring my remote speaker, but I'll just use the phones. If you can't hear anything, make sure you let us know. All right, so the owl is on.
Yes.
It is now five twenty-five, we should be going live. This is a work session, first one of the year twenty twenty-four. This is the Allen City Council work session. And I know it's been here that and what's the work session of the council even together. Normally, they wouldn't do that. So I think what we'll do is it's all right, we can improve the agenda and that stuff after we finish the work session. If that makes sense. All right, now, this is the work session, five twenty-five, January ninth, twenty twenty-four, City of Allen. Councilmember Rainville will be participating via Zoom and also by, by speaker phone from fifty-six oh-one, Highway A one A, number, unit number two hundred, Indian River Shores, Florida, three-two-nine-six-three. Anyone wishing to participate from that location in Florida should call six-one-two-nine-six-four-five-three-two-eight. For assistance, and that probably won't work, it's, it's cheap when you saw. But you can show up there, wait there. If there's anybody in Florida and you get a phone call, you can drop off Mary. Take it from there.
Okay. I just like.
Okay, so right now, we're doing a work session on the Personnel Policy Updates Phase One. So how we want to do this? Start at the first page and just scroll through the red items. All right. So we have Personnel Policy Proposed Updates Conference Page, and we have January ninth decisions to be made. Current PTO decisions, current employee hired prior November first, twenty twenty-three, country boy with more than one year of service and less than six years of service, eight point three-three hours of the PTO paid per pay period. Well, that's twice a month, so sixteen dollars a month. That one you understanding?
Yes.
Yes.
Two days a month. Employees of fifteen plus years of experience get eleven point six-six hours per pay period of twenty-three and one point three hours every month. And not using three hours, three days of PTO a month and building up. Right? While existing contracts, contract superseness policy at the end of twenty twenty-four payout of up to twenty, two hundred hours forty hours maybe or more. So that really should be one hundred and sixty hours. What we said. Because we're rolling over forty, not paying out two hundred, but it was the payout for two hundred or just for that, well, hundred and sixty. If they roll over that, we're gonna roll. Thanks. So we're not paying out two hundred and roll over forty, paying out one sixty and roll over forty.
Oh, sorry, so I think he was trying to say you can pay out up to two hundred because he wanted to. So I'll try to word it, so up to two hundred and we paid out four roll over, so he wanted to get it up.
Or pay out one sixty and roll over.
Correct, so I'll already word that.
Right? On the first page. Mentioned the content page, because it was a page, January ninth, the sales. That's what I was saying, right now, any employee with one year of service or more gets little over two days PTO every month.
Right now, yeah.
And if you have more than fifteen, you get three days plus two days. So with your eleven days of holidays and that, you pretty much have you know, four days off a month and not come back. At the end of twenty twenty-four, we'll pay out up to two hundred hours to wipe out any carryover, or you can pay a hundred and sixty hours and roll over forty hours.
And I did just add, any accrued hours above two hundred will be lost.
Right.
Effective December very first.
And in twenty twenty-five and beyond, all employees, probably forty hour rollover max, and forty hour payouts. If you have eighty hours at the end of twenty twenty-four uh, we would pay you forty. Are we doing that? Are we paying you forty? Are we doing?
It was a it was a, it was a, I would guess, I would call it a compromise for the people who have lots of PTO.
So the, if I may just read, the future rollover of forty, you pay out of forty for all new hires and for existing hires after twenty twenty-five was to allow, we wanted to, it was a very busy election year, and we mean that we're gonna pay extra time off in the following year, you could roll over forty hours and create as the current year, so you can take a longer vacation next.
So, so we have a forty hours rollover, but we're also paying forty hours out.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor. That was because when the guys can't take their vacation, because it's a super snowy year or whatever is going on, and they can't take their vacation, it would be a incentive for not calling in sick and not using their time so that they could still get paid instead of taking off when we need them to follow.
So the idea was not to be paying out everybody forty hours and roll over on that. That's an option.
And for other, that's, and for other workers.
Is that everybody's understanding? That was my understanding, especially if you're like, if we got blasted that we're gonna be gone in the last couple of weeks and December, and that last snow. It would be a tough break to not have to lose it because you're gonna be carryover forty. So rather than to make the exception for all time or where our currents why don't we just put in evidence and we can carry over forty, and yet there are exceptions because of elections or overtime, snowplow, because that's what it's gonna be.
Right.
Turn on the other stormy days. It's going to be those unusual circumstances. Use it up, or if you're saying, yeah, I've got a reef, I can't, I can't burn it for the whole, we don't, um make that to the administrator, so yeah, I can I can extend that. If there's extenuating circumstances gathered, then everybody kind of put in the years to now to show them. Because one of, one of the things you'll see in tonight's agenda is calendar, because we have a meeting Christmas next year is the proposal for the Christmas and the years. Christmas weekend. So they will keep the eleven.
Unless it's, unless it's snow.
Well, unless, yeah.
Which also is some of the exceptions.
Yeah. And really, that's the exception in the box. And the election rollover by any event.
So then it would be left up to the administrator at that point, correct?
And the idea is hard to extend it, tell the council, yeah, we're extending it. You better not get your streets on.
No, I don't want those numbers. Almost out.
She may just claim it and say, you're all on over forty hours, and if, if it comes into that, you need an extra week. Yeah.
I don't, I don't do it that way. There's always.
Yeah, speak up, Mary, can you hear Dan? Mary?
It's a stretch to, I mean, it's, it's a stretch now for people to use their vacation, so if we're gonna make it a week here, be in that situation. Plan for it, you ended up still calling, then we make an exception, otherwise, if you planned for it and you use it up, then it's being used, that's a little point of it.
I don't, okay, but if, but if there is an exception, and then we're creating something with the city administrator to be at, at his discretion.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. It's either in, if, or we pay however.
Gary, any thoughts? Or Dan something here?
I I would hope that throughout the year knowing that they have this goal to be met at the end of the year, that they would do their best to run out of PTO. The deputy clerk is in a whole different situation based on elections. And so I could see an, an exception for that. But I would hope that the city administrator's assistant, the assistants, and the, of course, would run out of time during the year, carry over a minimum.
Mr. Mayor.
You down, Mary?
Yes.
Yes, Mary.
In the meeting minutes from, on December fourteenth, it was pretty much decided, it says, it was discussion to allow forty hour rollover and pay out forty hours of PTO at the end of the year, or any combination of those numbers. Anything over eighty hours not used will be lost as of twelve, twenty, or thirty-one, twenty-four.
Yeah, and that's why we're going through this to say, you know, we've discussed this before, and I will finalize. And so we've had a chance to think about some of these things, and they look at it and say, so are we automatically building in? Because what you're gonna do is say just in case, I'm gonna, I know I can carry one forty. I'm gonna carry an extra week, but at the end, because if I'm not using it, I'm gonna be paying for it. And we'll have that double pay at the end of the year for essentially everyone.
Mr. Mayor, which I recall from the discussion, one, a lot of the PTO that we're gonna be going over tonight was discussed in the last meeting, but the comment at the end was we need to sleep on this, and we will bring it in at the next meeting. Uh, but I also recall that the purpose of the payout was specifically, if we had snow, we didn't want people snowpiling to then lose their PTO. So I did just adjust it on the screen to say at the end of the fiscal year, employees may roll over up to forty hours. If there are extenuating circumstances, for example, snow or increasingly cyclical PTO, administrator may approve payout of an additional forty hours, just because we would hate for just snow the last week of the year and our snowplowers either commence or, or get, or lose those gains.
Did you follow that, Mary?
Yes.
Does, does that make sense? It's on the screen there.
Oh, you have that word again.
Yeah. On the screen.
Yes.
So is there any area in here also that we could put where we put more onto our administrator shoulders, where, like Mary said, we'd be hoping that people would be knowing this, that they'd be taking it out? So therefore, is that something that we want to put something in here that the administrator would um, be, which would be aware of that? So can we make sure that people were taking that? I mean, as in.
Well, right now, he does.
Right.
I, I would like to get to a point where they don't want to be able to keep it to PTO. I've never been at a job where they come and warn me, by the way, your PTO is running high. Most people know what they've got. Uh, but Scott's pretty good about making sure, and I know I've been in there before, where he's reminding people year end's coming for you. And they, I see them talking about it, saying, you know what the deadline is. If you're sitting at two hundred right now, you, you're sitting, if you were sitting at two hundred and twenty last week, you lost one. And now they get your loss. So, so they're, they're cognizant of it, and the administrator does a good job. I was going for it, I'm hoping they have to be.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Randy.
But yet, what is different going forward is we now have full-time staff three, and I don't know. It's more of a vulnerability for staff to take time off. We, we, we have three, we have actually have some, some benefit to that.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'm just trying to recall, as Jenny, you guys seen that conversation, one of the part of that conversation also, though. And that comes from the elders as well, that was talking. Wasn't it also about, um if somebody had something done, we were trying not necessarily have to go in the negative under accrual and all that, so if somebody had a trip planned for Hawaii or something like that, maybe that would take the forty hours and the forty hours and still be able to go after the first year without that, because we had a long discussion on accrual going negative, how long it will take somebody to try to get back. And it's, so wasn't that all part of that conversation?
I thought that was, we, we, it does say there specifically in your notes that if somebody does have vacation plan, they've got the forty hour rollover, they can borrow against it, as long as they don't leave. If they leave, it's, it's taken from their last check.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor. That was perfectly stated, and this can be discussed after your first year of tech, so you cannot borrow from your PTO bucket during that higher dates to your first anniversary, but correct, after your first anniversary, you may borrow, and then you, you can, it was again.
Yeah, you're doing that. You're getting it all, come on.
All right, so as it's written on, on here. And Mary, see what's on this thing?
I think that was set up.
You do have the packet, but.
Yeah, we're just, Jenny, altered the wording, so did you hear what she had put in there? Okay. Well, that, we're comfortable with that, right? That's fine, we're encouraging people to use the panel. It should be scheduled, and if, if someone's been around, I mean, basically, after that first that first year, you, you're, you start January first to three weeks. There, see, you're already against it. Or if you're seeing, setting. You have more, right, no, I understand that, yeah, so. All right. Go down, clean it up. Anything else on that page?
Yes, if we can go back to that page, there was one more thing, we kind of skipped down to page two, but there was one more thing on the previous page. Uh, there had been a lot of discussion previously about not allowing PTO during the probationary period, but once we had discussed during your first year of service, you can only use PTO as it's approved, because we changed the PTO that you get from higher dates to first anniversary. Uh, my understanding was we were going to remove the no PTO during the first six months, because you were only accruing less than one day a month, so we were going to allow PTO as it was approved during the probationary and training period. So I just wanted to call that out, because then I did go back and update all previous references to you cannot use PTO during the training period, remove those and replace it with the numbers that you see here.
So I mean again, that was one of the concerns we had, because we had people using PTO as it was approved and and everything burned by the time we quit, having that new the probation period. With the E S S T they will be accruing E S S T.
No, because our full-time employees will, you will either be accruing PTO, or you will be accruing E S S T. So if you are a new hire who is benefit eligible, you will be accruing PTO at three point three hours per pay period. If you are a part-time or seasonal employee as a new hire, you will be accruing E S S T at one hour per, every three hours worked. So that was the other distinction, because a new full-time employee will not have E S S T available. This way, they will at least have three point three hours per pay period to use during the probationary period. They should, with a lower amount of annoys to use S T.
If, if E S, then that's fine. No, for the probation period. They can use PTO in a probation period as a group.
Correct, so it's six point six hours per month. So during the first six months, they'll be accruing thirty-eight hours during that time, and they can only use it as it's approved. So during their first month of employment, they can only six point six hours. But from the previous discussion, that PTO is for anything, so that would be for family emergency, their sick, their child is sick today, and their funeral. Uh, I believe that was the change, because it is a rather minimal amount that they could use during the first six months, I believe the ideal was that it would be very hard to use six hours um, during the first.
I have a thought, not impossible, but, okay. All right. So pay out upon termination, once you pay out, or you use PTO for your termination.
So the previous change had been to cap it, the original contract had no cap payout. Once, um, it was changed to match the rollover amount of two hundred hours. Now that the rollover amount is forty hours, should the payout at termination be adjusted to forty hours? Eighty hours, a hundred, or left at two hundred?
We don't expect to see two hundred. Pay out of forty?
They didn't, okay, if they didn't take any time off, anything about they. Here's where I get into. Here's where I get into. I'd like to pay out what they approved but didn't use, but what they've already basically gotten at all, and now if we start calculating what's, by approved and not approved, that becomes a little bit of a tracking challenge.
Natalie, correct me, um, on each paycheck going forward to qualify for the E S S T requirements, which for full-time employees will be labeled PTO, because that counts as a requirement. Every paycheck will now say, these are PTO hours you have accrued, these are the PTO hours you have left. So I think from a record-keeping standpoint, every paycheck will already have those.
It will, it's part of the software.
So it would be a nightmare.
No. And, and I thought, as I was talking that whole thing through I did realize, um capping the payout amount could be tricky. We'd have to make sure that we talked through that with the city attorney, because they technically have it through it, if they're making that statement, it would. Because they technically haven't, if they're being in good standing, it would be difficult to explain why you're not paying out to them. I just noticed that the two hundred hours was changed and one of the college should be changed, this two hundred hours.
Yeah.
But they get to grow more than two hundred.
Correct. If they are a long term employee who's been here more than ten years, they could accrue up to. If they don't take any during the year, then with the end of the year, they could have two hundred and eighty, but.
Plus the forty period.
Right.
They get three hundred and twenty.
Correct.
But you can lose your, you can lose your, kind of people have lost their time off for their, for their lives, they give them the job.
Right, correct.
But it, but for, for that court case, it just has to be very clear in the policy what now then's. Role is on it. So if somebody were to leave and they had three hundred hours and now then we're to pay them out. Forty or eighty or two hundred, the policy has to be very clear so that that employee could not come back and. And question why they want to get out.
You have to make that decision immediately. So the the question is, if we do anything less than. Whatever's approved, which could be three hundred plus hours, we need to ask the attorney about a legal verbiage we have.
Yes.
Legal. Sponsor. Legally, we can do this, but we want to do the responsibility to for our residents and families.
Correct. So I would recommend not putting any number of hours there if we want to change it where they. Received something less than what they've accrued. Uh, if we give the attorney ways in on that, would be appropriate then.
So we didn't even have, so legally we don't even have to put.
Yeah, yeah, you're sorry.
Legally, if you put, if you put nothing, then you will pay out every employee every hour.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, that's what I, that's what I didn't understand because when you were saying.
Alright, so that's a question from Mr. Rupi.
Want to change it?
Yeah, well, right now, like, two hundred is is less than the computer. It's arbitrary right now, it's forty eight or two hundred or whatever they approve. And and not you ones.
Correct. The two hundred hours has not been formalized in the final version. The original version will see to not have a cap. So if we don't change that, then we're back to not having.
And we like that cap. How would you word that in the stock? All in agreement?
Yes.
That we're in a spot.
Yeah.
And then Mr. Mayor, at that same time, if we can uh, make sure my previous notes have clarified with the attorney. The verbiage on not paying out any PTO that they need and they are not in good standing. We just need to make sure that that verbiage will hold up.
So do you have those tools actioned?
I do, yes. And then um, having the attorney renew the acknowledgements. Form, which is going to be the city's record that each employee has received a copy of this and they agreed to the policy. So those three.
So each year, every employee, even though it's not new hires.
Uh, if if there are no changes at all to the policy, they don't need to resign every year. But if there are changes, they'll be signing, they'll receive the new to newly signed, so.
What did I do?
Correct, another couple meetings. Mary's uh. She's sucking up the sun, Cora. She's on speakerphone. Hey, Mary. It's a little warmer than it's gonna be here. It could be a negative numbers to rise. But it's just for a couple of days, we can back up to home. So you're sending it all down your way.
Yeah.
Alright, let's go on then. Let's finish up page two. I'll back it in. Yeah, we started. The question we just had, I understand to the attorney's payout is on termination. Right now, we're suggesting that at one point, maybe two hundred hours could be paid out to. Uh, leave in good standing. Uh, so right now, if we're carrying over this forty hours, it's gonna be forty hours, eighty hours. And then it became an issue, um, technically, somebody in. Good standing of forty hours of rollover and a full benefit for the year could add three hundred and twenty hours. We're gonna ask the attorney to clarify what we can do. If it's less than total accrued and not used, what can we do? I would be worded at our policy to say it's going to be some other, some other, it's less than what. Three hundred and twenty actually be. And then be clarified with the. Carryover is forty hours. If there's necessity at the end of the year, stacking another forty hours, can you get our speaks while? I have the current data, that's the situation. Alright. So that's a question from Mr. Rupi. Any questions from Mr. Rupi? Right, then we get down to. Your employee is hired after November first. I asked him that, I asked him with this. Uh, last time, beginning of February, the sleep model, I came back and I. I have a problem with getting fully maxed in ten years. In the remaining hours. And so looking at at this chart that we have here, I would like to suggest for your consideration. Altering it slightly to say higher date to second anniversary, ten days. Second anniversary to fifth anniversary, fifteen days, fifth through eight, twenty days, eight through ten. Twenty five days, tenth through twelve, thirty days, and twelve through fifteen, twenty five. Will still be a max of seven weeks plus.
We say hollow well years plus seven, seventeen.
Yeah. Well, fifteen years, tenth to twelve was thirty, twelve to fifteen.
Yeah, past twelve is.
Seven. So higher higher date to second anniversary, ten days. Second anniversary and completion of the second anniversary is actually where we're at here. Um, so higher date through this second year, ten days. Beginning of the third year through the fifth year, fifteen days, beginning of the sixth year through the eighth year, twenty days. Or ninth year, eighth year, so. Beginning of ninth year to the tenth year, twenty five days, beginning of eleventh year to the twelfth, twenty days. And beginning of the thirteenth year, thirty five.
Just turn and change it, Karen, I'm trying to follow. So uh, I'm sorry, eighth through ten?
Yeah.
So higher date to the second.
But it's really, it's through the completion of the eight, so really should be the nine, start of the ninth through completion of the two.
So we just have to change the order and on verse three.
The accruing amounts were, please, and we're going, we're changing on our anniversary. This is a whole year. That's what you're applying, I don't.
Well, so. So from your higher date through the completion of your second year, it's ten days. So when you're starting your third year, you're in the next month.
Mr. Mayor, um. But Councilmember Ryan is correct. He said on your second anniversary, you will go to that next number. So we can change.
But what I'm saying is, is to. Push those back.
Correct. So I updated the chart.
Placement of your second year, which would be the start of your third year. You go to your three days.
So in the.
Oh, third anniversary, okay.
Very good, the second year.
Starting your third count, your third year, you flip to fifteen.
The third year.
So let's say second.
So start of your third year, start of your third year.
The fifth anniversary is your starting your sixth year.
Ten, your second.
Just so, just mayor.
Yes.
Just so I'm clear then, so let's use. Our new hire in public works. His one year anniversary is May. So he won't give an additional bump until his third anniversary, so two years from May.
Second. Yes, so that is the only to clarify. I believe that it would be his second anniversary, meaning he has successfully completed two full years with the city and he's. Entering his.
Third year.
Third year.
So a year from this coming.
Correct. The May of twenty twenty five. That, Mr. Mayor, is that. So the idea is the same, just to figure out how to. So the second chart. Is the updated proposed.
Mary, were you able to follow that?
I think it might be easier to use, you could name one one twenty four, your higher than one one twenty four. And maybe your second year is one one twenty six and then one one. Twenty seven, whatever the number of years since, so that calendar year. Are you?
Now, the the one concern we had, again, last time we talked about that, is everybody then is trying to take. To clear their their PTO at the same time.
One one twenty four, it could be three fifteen twenty four. Yeah, whatever you're paying, you're you're starting, I just think, okay, that's it.
You're giving it as an example is what you're saying.
Yeah. Let's say I start my employment on February fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Then in February fifteenth and twenty twenty six is my, that end of my second employee year.
Right.
Correct. And then you would increase, you would go to the next PTO bucket. On February one twenty six.
Yeah, maybe that's what we're saying. Yeah, okay. Yes, ma'am.
This would not affect our employee, this is a secondary court amendment, right? Remember one.
No, no, it would impact them.
It doesn't impact the two other team members in the meeting. It's all like catches up, right? Is that what we're saying? Right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, what about six years, one to ten years?
Yeah.
Mary?
I like your questions.
Okay, Dan?
I'd rather do higher date to first anniversary, you want to stretch it out after that and make it first anniversary in five years.
What's your thinking on that one?
I just, that's just seems very mean that you're you're stuck in in today that you're stuck with two weeks of vacation for. And two years, you start your career. And these are, correct me here, these are total days. You use them for vacation, you use them for six, yes.
Okay.
It's well.
But, Mr. Mayor, I know that now then have the chart going up one week every bucket. I don't have it, I can find it, but most of the other cities don't necessarily do five days per bucket. Uh, so there is an incentive to stay on longer, but it's not necessarily that it's an extra week. So for example, for Councilmember Ryan, you could do higher date to first anniversary. Ten days, first anniversary to third anniversary, thirteen days. I know that complicated, but I'm just saying other cities don't necessarily go up. One week at a time.
So you're gonna make a proposal, you hire date to first anniversary to ten, first anniversary to fifth anniversary, it's PTO. So the first year you work there, you get two weeks after that, hit three weeks. Knowing that this is vacation and. Sick times with all. Feels like. Feels like you're hiring against tense. The way that you have to hold back trying because you know. No, I don't get it. I would support what I can do. But I adjust my amounts, seven weeks for the maximum. I got seven days.
Well, yeah. A lot of holidays too.
Yes, it's nine weeks off, yeah. Everybody like that?
So I did one flight. Have your thirteen year, then you have.
You got, you work one year, you work. Three years, three years, three years.
Well, so again, be consistent, you put three years, the second, the third one would be. It was five, I'm how long from there? Eight, probably be eleven, thirteen. You look two in there. Make the next one, oh, about eleven, eleven.
Yeah, I agree, that's, you better go out of this.
That's funny.
I mean, that's really generous.
Eight to eleven, and it should be eleven fourteen. Should be eleven fourteen. You want a three year.
Yep. My husband's been had this. Three weeks, just got me before.
Really comment would be now the longest chunk is years one through five, and I feel like that would be. If I'm, I do want to be honored, people sticking around, because. That's just.
No way. Uh, that can be like, it's just, uh. Yeah, it is. I, I wasn't in the conversation, I'm just saying how long it's gonna take certain folks and all that kind of stuff, and. It's, uh. I'm looking at it, I mean, if you, if, you know, individuals here, two years and they have kids and. Kids are out sick for a week, and, and it just tries. Not being able to take vacation, not being able to get away. And then they're gonna continue, we're gonna talk a little bit later about. Closing the offices over Christmas, and then we're gonna use them. You're gonna need to stay in a paid status, they need to get PTO to stay. No more closing the offices, that type of stuff, I just think we're gonna do some activity for people to be able to get. And I think we worked very hard at the city. And I think we put in. Considerably, a lot of hours, it'd be nice to be able to have. A compensation package that allows you to get away from them. But I, I, I get what you're gonna try to do, or, or shrink it down a little, or shrink it down, it's gonna take you a long to get there. It's gonna be a long time before anybody on staff's gonna get a fourteen. Years of service. How's my ring up?
So again, I think when we make this effective after one one twenty four. That it doesn't affect any of our existing employees. Uh, we only have, uh, the two that aren't. You know, at the half of that, uh, as far as years of service, uh. That they could stay at the old white hole.
Who's the owner of the bone, so just change. This. I think what she's proposing is changing this from November first to January first.
Essentially. Umbrella in our other. Our last hired employee, right?
Right.
And do the same. Once he gets cursed. Once he catches up with this plan, and it all switches over to this plan, all new employees, mark this one.
So what would that transition be?
So the existing one is but not. Uh, the existing proposed, but I think I have a new system in the first.
Uh, the, the current is.
Twenty twenty four.
So three weeks, so it's basically three weeks now.
So the, the existing entire date to fifth anniversary is twenty four, so twenty four days.
It's one day, four to five weeks. That's why we started this whole thing.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I.
We're starting here, it's the first year, you get five weeks.
And that's, that's why we were.
Right.
That's why it was all started back in September, we wanna get this cleared before we start.
That's why I made it clear, so it's like.
Yes.
Now, that's why we wanna get this cleared up for many higher things.
I know, I just had a brain blur, I was thinking of things too.
No, I'm not saying that.
Right, so we're going down, so we had five weeks, and now it's only down to. For everyone, yeah, five weeks, right?
Correct, higher date to the fifth anniversary.
And now we're going down to.
So you're down to weeks.
Two weeks for the first year, three weeks. And by. Fifth anniversary of the next four weeks. Eight, back up to.
So we don't count existing.
Yeah, that's, that's the other issue that we have, we just discussed that. You're getting three days a month. Burning it up. You're gonna come to the end of the year saying, I'm gonna lose hours, people are gonna take out all the money for this.
And that's what we talked about before.
Yeah, I think this aligns. I mean, this aligns to. More generous than the. Private sector. Yes, it was more generous than the private sector, and. It was at a faster gradient through the private sector. So.
So there's my father.
All right, can I just say one last second, and I'll get off it then? So when you take a look at a deputy fair. Would it have twenty three score on the. Would have been a twenty five days of diving for three to five years? How that deputy fair breaks that each other years get that same.
Well, he said.
Why I was trying to make it, unless you guys change the date. It holds it again, it's a sign of it.
I said you don't, I can say, it's. January twenty twenty. Yeah, it's anybody that's hired, if you guys wanna hear about her. Right, our person that we hired last year, I mean. I'm fine with that, but. Uh, it's like, that is, that is. You would not be able to get that, that kind of package from the private sector, and I don't believe that. I mean, I know you guys work super hard, and people in the private sector are really hard too. And it's the same, it's. Grass is greener on the other side, and you just gotta let them develop, more understand all that stuff, but it's like that is super generous. Even considering there's. At five years, you get a month. At eight years, you get five weeks.
Does there's a shortage with the anniversaries as it stands?
Yeah, I, you guys are thinking about that, I, that's basis.
But then, but the kind of, the. What we discussed, the second anniversary means you're starting your third year.
I think what the staff is having a problem to those. Sometimes we, we're dictating that they're going to close the offices, so they don't get to choose that option, you know, we're not dictating.
They, they like that this year, you're gonna work, it just makes sense, we don't have, it's up for discussion.
And they may also choose to say, we're gonna close the offices in eight days. And we'll have, we can take it paid, you can take it unpaid, or as a city, we could choose a couple of square meters.
Right, and that's, but that's what I think, Eric, I think that's one of the things that Scott had mentioned, was that.
But we're also.
We're taking a holiday.
Carrier of the eighty items, which is. Typically.
Or.
And discretionary.
You know, before you go out here, that was true.
So we still need discretionary. I don't know, what did we say?
Uh, second chart.
Yes, I'm a bit of a, yeah.
But then, in the actual policy itself. The verbage that will be changed is the PTO during probation. It was previously added that you cannot use PTO during probation, that will be approved. Um. The verbage will, we're removing a bunch of verbages that we had previously added, changing it to. During your first year of service, you can only use PTO as it is approved. Starting on your first anniversary, with PTO before it's approved, you use PTO that was not approved and you leave service. It will be deducted from your final pension.
I'll let her.
Yes. The PTO payout upon termination will be updated based on the attorney's decision. And I will update. The chart to be the chart that we just created, right? And then I will update the verbage to what we just changed now, forty hour rollover discretionary. Um, forty hours, do we want that discretionary forty hours to be paid out or paid out for?
It will be paid. Because they'd be using. And if they have to come in, wow. Now, what was the other two questions from Mr. Billy?
Um, the verbage that PTO, if we change, that you do not get all hours approved, paid out on the termination, in good standing. Uh, how many hours? Are legal and responsible? The termination for the verbage that if you leave the city and you are not in good standing, you will not receive payout of any PTO hours. And the acknowledgement documents that all the ways will find. Um, but as I'm figuring that through, let's, if we can add to that. The verbage that if you use PTO, that has not accrued any leave service, it will be deducted from your final pension. Because people are getting a lot of good checks, and they expect to be able to return that verbage is adequate.
So, so Scott, is this something that you would have generated? I'll update it on this.
So this is not PTO based, but for E S S T, just to call out that. Required E S S T verbage, um. That the league sent out. Has been added to the policy as well, this is for our part-time and seasonal employees. I did add. Verbage that full-time employees do not approve E S S T, that the PTO plan is more generous than the E S S T. Then all good verbages just. Verbatim from what's required from the city.
All right. Move forward?
Yep.
Credit card or not? I, I believe this is what. Because I'm not willing to get, playing between having thousand dollars and restricted use credit cards. Ten thousand dollars a week, five thousand dollars a week, we're spending.
And that should be one?
There's we, all of these. Ten thousand dollars, even that. Ten thousand a month, that's. It's three hundred thousand dollars.
How do you get a word, it's always been about a verbage.
Yeah, but I, I, what I would like to make. Again, these are, these are just numbers, what? What do we need? Sixty thousand dollars. Credit. And that'll be, you guys, I understand prepaid's.
Yeah, a lot of the prepaid's are on there, but it was my understanding that you wanted us to follow up and get a point-based. Rewards credit card, and I was to start using that to accumulate cash backs for this.
David, but, but this is, this is a number that. We don't have, how these dollars can be spent, and what they can be spent on. Are there any restrictions in spending, any recording requirements? Our historical spending is, I understand that if we have a cash back card, it would make sense to. Get some rewards out of it, like doing a lot of. But it is, Dave Joe. Joe has five thousand dollars a month to spend. What are the guardrails? Why can't you spend it, or what isn't spending? What are you doing here?
They still have to quote all invoices, and it would be, you know, Steph and I talked about this too, we did not have a. I did, was not asked many of those questions, I was asked, how much do you think that we would need? If we were gonna do it, but like NAPA, we have an account for them, we could put that on without a. Um, fee surcharge, so any of the vendors that we use that currently bill us. We could put on a credit card if they don't charge an additional fee to do so. That's what my. I mean, it'd be no different than what they're doing now. Other than. You would see it after the fact instead of before the check goes up.
Yeah, I just. To, to me, there, there needs to be some, some guardrails around. We have. Even if, if it's monthly, if we had three hundred thousand dollars worth of. Exposure here. What? Should we be doing that expectancy? Cause right now, we're, we're there, we're laying three hundred thousand, you guys can spend it without the cost.
And that might have been my misunderstanding of month for me, so.
It says we can, the original policy says.
It does seem.
Fill in the blank here, say.
So what are they spending the money on? What would they be spending it on? Well, like right now, I ordered pizza. Uh, the. First net for the tablet that gives up fire department directions is run on a credit card every month. Um, the my bike or Scott is on a credit card, the. A lot of auto pays. Are out of the.
But that's a year's, right?
Most of it, yeah, what is coming up are the guys' accounts. What is coming up in June, so I can tell you. Uh, win electric, a pump. Batteries plus. Uh, win electric again. That was me, it was me, not a supervisor's me, so this month, there wasn't a lot, there was a batteries plus. For three hundred and sixty four dollars, there was a pump for three hundred dollars, there was some. Two hundred and eighteen dollars for ranning, which was had to do with parks or something, the maintenance for the front loader. Another batteries plus, they must have been buying backup batteries or something. Um, so, but if we were to get the credit card as I was directed, you could add some of these other. The ones that are on checks, not auto pay.
We did a thousand dollars to figure out this month, that could be something we could have gotten, find smart, we did instead of just being.
Right, um, like Adams, the past control for the fire department could have been put on a credit card. Um, integration plus could have been. Menards, instead of using this, the billing way, I know I use my points to go to South Carolina off of their. Car this last time. Not that, that would help, that's the two percent back. NAPA, peer tech. R B's computers actually would take credit cards. You know, so it's just depending, and that might be my mistake, I just thought I was directed to do that.
Yeah, so. So again. I think there needs to be. So, if, if you take a look at a section thirteen, that kind of policy with credit cards.
Mr. Mayor, if they're already spending it, they're on checks. All they're doing is transferring it over to the credit, that's what I'm understanding. So.
Everything that I signed off this. Almost six hundred thousand dollars I'm gonna sign off this month, and we're approving this month, most of that, I see the invoices. You put on a credit card, we don't know. You've got the Menards, you've got. I'm just saying that, that the eleven thousand we have on credit cards here this month.
Yeah.
You'll see some of that office supplies and stuff. But, but right now, what I'm saying is. Without. Better guidelines we got here, right here, it says the purpose of this policy. Boys who are department heads are authorized to use direct use of the city, not the headless credit lines. Car holders authorized to spend no more than X amount per week on official business obtained by our crewway and else. Purpose of this policy statement, spend means. Utilizing one's own funds, credit, which is sitting really adverse. Utilizing petty cash for incurring. Utilizing petty cash or incurring, I think it's supposed to say charged credit obligation that you can see. And I'm saying right now, our exposure is seventy-five hundred dollars. These new numbers are exposure to the credit policy. If we go monthly, it's nearly three hundred.
So seventy-five hundred dollars, but is that because that's on credit, is what you're saying, seventy-five hundred dollars? And what you're also.
Credit card.
Okay. And what you're. And what you're also saying is you are seeing invoices that we write checks to see the details, but on a credit like those Menards. You don't have to see what they spent at Menards, you just need to see Menards, is that what you're?
Which, Mr. Mayor? That's, I would say that's any crap, because I have all.
Card management services. Yes, card management services is nineteen hundred this week.
But there have been months that I've gone over the seventy-five hundred dollars and then charged and over the credit limit fee.
And, and, and I'm not disagreeing. That, that we need something. I'm just, we're going from nothing to all of a sudden. If it's a monthly amount, three hundred thousand dollars exposure with no guardrails for what people are spending. I, I'm the one who's asking that we use cash back and there's rewards that outweigh these service fees. I think that's a reasonable thing, right? But I would just like to see something other than going self into risk.
And so we look at how, you know, I think at home. Our company works like. We have. Like a travel entertaining card that you use for business purposes when you're on the road and then. This feels like it's more of a, what we would call pro card, which is what your line set. To essentially day-to-day for operations to, to keep operations still, but. We've gone a hundred percent of the other and got rid of as many pro cards as possible because there's. From a compliance standpoint and trying to track this stuff, it's much different than if you have. A purchase agreement set up with a supplier and you're ordering it through. Like the purchase system, which. You have a purchase agreement set up with NAPA, you have a purchase agreement set up with Menards. You haven't set up that yet already, so you're essentially saying, help unwind all that and leave that visibility. And go to, uh, credit cards, you can forget your points back. So if that's the direction. Then everybody potentially is going to need one with some limit on it, or you go back the other way and say. I want to limit this, I want it to have. Scott has been pulling pro card and everybody's got to go with Scott, so he's going to authorize it. And if it's over X amount of purchase, it's got to go and get one or two compliments or things. Feels like that's, it's one way or the other, I think, from what I call. I would be more opposed to not worrying about the credit card points and leave it as, we got. Purchasing agreements set up with these suppliers that would be typically used so that you get invoice, we've got a good record of it. And that you, let alone the pro cards to. A couple of people and not everybody in the office needs pro card.
We could increase the amount, so instead of hitting that limit. We can actually increase that so we're not hitting that unlimited.
Potentially, yeah.
So, and, and you can still, if you're, if you have any pro card, you can still cash back a cover. You could just, yeah, that's not gonna be three hundred dollars, right?
But I mean, there's some of the obvious, this communication or intent, it's like, if you want to go away from all that, then again, everybody's gonna get your card and. You know, I don't know that Natalie knows, which either was to store XYZ, it doesn't mean it costs five hundred dollars, it's been cost. Fifteen hundred, man, probably depends on what we're trying to do that, I think. So you're, those of us looking at this for you say, no, I want you guys to set up. Purchase agreements or have it set up to be invoice from Menards or Zeller or whoever else you typically work with. Set it up the normal billing way, don't use a credit card and we'll use credit cards for about. I broke something, I can go to. Home Depot right now and fix it and we don't have an account set up with them, so I'm going to need a card.
Well, which was the way that it is right now. And I would say if that's the way that we want to do it, then we don't do anything differently, just make it a combination seventy-five hundred dollars. And if we hit that a max and I just made a payment earlier if I have to.
Some of the things that I know I do with my work is that now everything is on computer a lot. So when I have to make purchases, whether, and I'm on accounts, this is how my work does, so they're on accounts and. Um. When I have to go to Menards or I go to those odd stores where I'm going to have to do that. Um, everything is online now, so I can actually look ahead of time to see how much things are going to cost. And it's one more step, but it then tracks me much better because now I've got a tracking ability to do it online. And then I can still go pick it up, but I can have that, that it makes more accountability for me to be able to go back and say, hey. I'm going to be over the limit here and then that can be recharged too. So I don't know if that would.
Yeah, and I do get, I mean, the guys turn in every credit card, but like today, I, um. One check in the claims was for the Minnesota farmers market renewal and then Mary, I had, which I thought was the same one. And she sent me, hey, this isn't going to be paid yet, and it was for the Department of Agriculture. And I used a credit card to do that. You don't want me to have to call you or do anything to get an approval to pay that, right? Because that I haven't done. Those are things that need to be done. Um, so I would say if, if we don't want to go the whole way of the points for everything. Do it just exactly the way we've been doing it, just leave it at the seventy-five hundred for all of us. Because Dave has times when he needs to go get things, some of the classes sometimes need to be put. On a credit card, Joe has places that we don't have accounts with that don't. Um, but like I said, all the other ones like NAPA, and I have receipts for everything on all the credit cards. And all of the, that goes with the check, so.
Was one of the problems though, was that it wasn't, there wasn't, there was an issue with, they could be ran out or something on it?
Yeah, yeah, we, because we had one month that the fire department did some stuff and Joe did some stuff and then Eric went to go. Get something silly like some keys or something, it was denied because we don't over limit. What was it?
Chains.
Chains. So that was one of the reasons when we, you know, Genevieve asked me, how much do we need? Well, it's, depends, right now, it's a cumulative, we have seventy-five hundred dollars for all of us. We could ask for it to be increased to ten thousand dollars for all of us. Um, I would say most of the months, we don't get that. It's just in case because Eric gets a little embarrassed when he goes up and he goes, I have a city card and I got denied. He says, it's, it's not fun.
Right. There's all those, there was top last, you know, about all the credit card thing works.
Well, we all had to give our own personal social security cards, but it is a city credit card.
Yeah, we'd, we'd like to move to a city card, it should be a city, right, our city identifier, not personal security. And, yeah, ten thousand is a reasonable. That one was unusual because you did have some fire department. Three hundred dollars.
And we, on top of the pump and some other things that we had to figure out.
That was, that was a big one. Obviously, we should have had a.
But Spine didn't know Buzz.
I think, and, you know, we bumped into the seven dollars, seventy-five hundred dollar card a couple times.
Mm-hmm.
We probably haven't got. Ten bucks.
No.
So that, that, that sounded like a reasonable one to put in there. Get, get, get a card in the cities. Identifier, that, first of all.
Mm-hmm.
And then, then we should take a look at the policy because right now it's, it's pretty loose. Like it says. Reimbursement, petty cash, or recharge for the same. We really need to clean out. What are the guidelines on using credit?
How many credit cards do we have, does it say? Uh, four or?
Yeah, it's myself, Joe, Dave and Scott.
Same card number, which is four within the same card.
Yeah, it's all the same account number. We all have a different card number. Um, but you know, like when, if they're going to the, um. Annual conference, I usually will put that on my card because I'll do the registrations. I would say Scott's years gets used rarely. And Joe's gets used rarely. Mine is probably the one that gets used the absolute most because I'm doing the registrations for different things and.
Well, you're doing it all. Food and stuff and reservations and I think it's still. Until her card gets hacked and she wants to use mine and that makes. So, so in those cards are hacked? Is that the whole account or the individual cards?
Individual card.
So is that exposure because you didn't just carry numbers on them?
Maybe. Maybe, I know that my identity is going to stolen and my, I, when we do our taxes, I have to turn in a special little PIN number that I filled in.
Really?
Yeah, somebody filed taxes and tried to get a refund. I got a letter asking for more information. I said, I never get a refund. I always have to pay it.
So, Mr. Mayor, so the original intent is fixing this line in the policy that, that says car holders are authorized to spend no more than X X X per week on official business. So what happened would be to per week to per month. Um, but the original idea was to put a dollar amount where there is not.
I think, I think the language of section thirteen is. If you, if you start from the back and we'll get there. People should be statutes and then statutes. And then, and the second line of bills for credit card consumption can be detailed, let's say it sets our documents. Claims presented simply in payment must be invited and highlighted. I'm guessing this is the way this, this is what you inherited. We haven't done anything with this.
Correct phase two, we go through, make sure each statute that reference is still valid. Make sure the verbiage makes sense.
Sir. Sir. So, my apologies if we got off track on the credit cards. My understanding was if we were going to switch to the points. And we were going to do more business on credit cards than we are today, what kind of limits will we be dealing with? The other flip side of that was if you have the city administrator. Has a maximum amount on his card and something was to come up, and I'll just say a snowblower, a chainsaw. Uh, you know, profferers are really great, held that last blow for us, but let's just say we needed, we wanted to pick that up, show them the last one, that was the time, which was the case. And it was really good to us, but we wanted to grab that. They have the city administrator have the ability to be able to put it on a credit card or a portion of it on a to pull it or something of that effect, right? Which we, we don't have today, but let's just say we wanted to, the administrator want to get that, the criteria we talked about, as long as it was within the budget. And it made sense. Instead of having to wait to the next council meeting to get it approved. That would give the city administrator the opportunity to grab something sooner rather than later. That's kind of the all encompassing of what we were talking about as a team when it came to this.
Right, we didn't, we didn't have any other language, we just went to, how do we?
You're right.
How do we word that in here?
Yeah. And after, after that far, we got to, what would it take to?
Yeah, that's, yeah, and so like I said, if, I'm looking at that much.
Sure, I do not know a whole lot of city business because oh my gosh, this is the last one then.
But again, just so we know, in fifteen years, I don't know we've lost anything because of that. We've, we've got good relationships, the snowblower was something that we talked about and one that they were looking at. Became available. Um, because my relationships will say, we'll give you five hundred dollars down and.
I'll, I'll lay it on the flip side, the end end goes out in the trough. You know, that it's a completely inexpensive repair that we don't, if, if, and we, we don't have a way to.
But we, we've always done it. No, I haven't yet, right? And so if it's not, if, if, if it's in budget, we don't pay. If we don't need to use a credit card, great. I don't know, well, I'm just saying, we, we've had a two thousand dollar expense multiple times. And that's what people look at the bill, they go, what is this?
Yeah, I think we need to understand what problem we're trying to solve. They were trying to solve. We want limited cards and when you have one to the office team and one to the, um. Or.
Fire station?
Fire station, it'll go back out, it needs limit, can we raise the limit and they need to go to Scott to get it? And if it's over, Scott's going to decide if it's a reasonable expense or expense that we want to put on a card and it's within the budget. So, if that's one way to go, understand. Said, hey, we've never been, we've had good relationships. I, I would also tell you, I don't know if we ever been beat out of a credit card by a whole bird employees. Don't believe, I don't know that we have, so. If we're trying to limit the credit card, but I would say we have like two of them, one for the office and one for the shop. And it's a pro card and you use it for other stuff that isn't, that we don't have a lot. That we don't have the ability to get anything, go store them with units.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to disagree a little bit with you right there because the fire department needs one. As what?
Three of them.
Okay, thank you. That doesn't work, but they need gas and.
So, so, but, but what, what I think, what we're saying, there's, we got, also fifteen minutes to wrap up. What we need is, is an actual proposal saying, based on our history. Our spending history, based on, on our experience with, where have we run out short, couldn't do something because of lack of approval. Uh, what would be the recommendation here? What would be the verbiage that says, if we're going to issue a card to the shop? Or the department to the office, what are the guidelines that holding people come? Because that's not even. Because they never had a spending, you never had guidelines.
Well, it was a limit and they were just, and we edited it, so.
No, I'm saying in this policy, there's only. There's a, there's a limit on the card.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know what, like, I don't see it in this one, but at one point, every. Also, it's been ten fifty hours. I don't know if it's a day or a year or a term or. So. We just need some. Guidelines, what are we looking for? What's the request? And we missed the mark of this one because we have three hundred dollars and then millions of dollars. Exposures. So what do we want to? I suggest we send this back and have. Staff put together reasonable proposal, proposal with. With the guideline, because it, it says in here, we're signing off. And use policy, authorized person to see and sign, now the form regarding credit card use. Where does that go? Where's, we're handing out credit cards, who signed off the usage? Where's the problem with this now? Because I've seen in the policies for.
Well, I would assume that the claims, when you sign off on the claims, that you approve there.
Well, but it says, they, they, they acknowledge much form, which are the credit cards, you just signed off.
Oh, not us.
So we supposedly, somewhere there's a form that we use as credit card, I don't know. So I'm just saying, if we're going to, if we're going to do this, let's put the full package together and say, okay. This makes sense. Here's a dollar amount. Here's who's authorized to use it, and here's the condition that we're just going to use it, explain it.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May I propose removing this sentence from the phase one and then having all of chapter thirteen be part of phase two? I just. Would be hesitant to having all of those acknowledged or finalized copy of phase one with an actual blank dollar amount.
Yes, I, I, that would make sense to me.
You have the company? Um, and Mr. Mayor, my, my input on this is. I like the three cards. You have one for the fire department, one for the office, one for the shop.
Mm-hmm.
And the managers of those areas. Own the pro card. They have a limit of, but it's one standard account, so they can come as a ten thousand dollar limit. And it's up to the manager to decide if the purchase on there is aligned to the budget.
That requires off the departments and you have to communicate them with each other.
That's up to you.
Yeah.
But I, I'm, I'm just not. But I, I'm just not actually just going, let's give everyone a card and it's like, is that any more chances to? I don't, just don't really mean that. I mean, on a control standpoint, it's like Scott owns the card, we're going to do something that's with Scott, make sure he's aligned with it, that's in the shop. Joe owns the card, he's got to make sure he's aligned to the purchase, that's the fire department, they own the card, they can go purchase.
That'll be in the. We'll call it for this and.
Now, has that only happened one time? What? We're, the one that twice a week.
And we did five thousand seventy-five hundred until that helped.
So the last item that was proposed for tonight was the verbiage in the policy regarding hiring committee, which as it stands right now, updating that school personnel committee and then defining what a personnel committee do. Uh, this would not have an immediate impact on new hires. The original idea of phase one was to make sure anything relating to new hires was updated. Um, this, I believe, was a suggestion from Councilmember Raydenville. Just to make sure that we know who the hiring or personnel committee is and what their responsibility.
That, that effectively.
Correct. I would propose that we can move this to phase.
Phase two.
You had a question and then in page nine, it says selection process, senate committee, there's, there's no. Line before that, I'm going to guess is part of phase two. Just excluding any election, they may have all those full time positions. We haven't addressed it.
Correct. That would be part of phase two.
We have to, we have to address that because right now we have only pulled nine hundred. Right? Anything else on phase one or if we need to?
The last item that I just wanted to know, what, um, life insurance benefits, it was mentioned in the last meeting that we would like an option for an employee to increase their coverage amount if they would like to. And now we did research with benefits company and that amount is allowed to be increased, but it would be in all. All employees would be too vulnerable to that.
Yeah, we need it.
Oh, wow. We'll work on it.
That's inconsistent with my experience in the past, so we, we will continue to investigate.
Okay.
Well, initially we were told on that specific topic that, no, twenty. And then after we pushed a little bit, say we pushed a little bit, then we got this phase two, so I don't know if we need to push more and then you get phase three, but. I would agree. But as we stand today, it's just like.
Excellent, Mr. Mayor. I would conclude that we are done with clean phase one changes. I do have all of the notes from today's discussion that I will need to type up and then I can send out the updated. And then Scott and I will connect on getting the changes run by the.
All right, so, so we have an action tonight. To approve phase one, but I think we'd like to see attorney's opinion and the final bottom. Are we holding anything up if we lay this proof up on that one? Not changing anything, but the personnel that are here. So when we get to that new business B one. Let me get the attorney's opinion and we see a plan.
Sure. That's bringing through the council. The one we mentioned and just, this is.
Yes. That's what I was.
Okay, okay.
Does everyone get a chance to see it ahead of time? If they got a question, then you get that into you ahead of time and get it from there. That makes sense to the council?
Yep.
All right.
Well, thank you for having me.
Thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you.
Reservations. Anything else, Mary?
Thank you, Mary.
All right, so we will. Close the work session. At, uh, six fifty-five. And a five minute break and then we start after the regular meetings. All right, seven o'clock.
I've just been reading that all.
Where we are still alive.
So, Mary, we're going to take a five minute break.
Change. Over the clock, it's like.
I tried to. Well, the problem was. Bring it out. I know.
For your Christmas.
I did. Because it was Friday, my kids weren't actually there.
All right.
I would, I thought I would.
Yeah, it was good. We, uh, we have a little. So I've been home for the Christmas, yeah, because it's, this is, there's like. My girls and. Like Jay and I, the girls of Texas, and we had a present, and brought, took like two dollars for other watches down there, so we, it's one of, you know, you have to stay out, it's like, so we're still there, so I guess there. New days.
Oh.
Never thought that would be really. Yeah, so it's kind of. It's been a crazy, I don't think, man.
It's been great. It's winter.
We have pizza, we have cheese. She's. Her brother and sister right now. Should we know that? In the first few years. They're driving back. Also, pass, pass, whatever happened to it? Did you read that? Don't, they're bad out.
He wasn't sitting down.
So, see, you did. She was always a lot healthier than she was. Oh, hi.
Okay. Okay. You have any, is that? Uh, no, it's. Have they got mosquitoes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, uh, certainly. It's. I was working at Earth. Sounds like it's. Every year. Figure out. No, it's been a weird. It is actually. A little bit long, actually. Yeah, yeah, I remember where that. She was. Talking, yeah. Ever been in a, I suppose.
Yeah.
So there you go. You take it and I, please, especially when you.
This is the new, but already I saw. Okay, so that is in the process, yeah, and all correct.
Oh, gosh, that's interesting.
You were just talking about it to you, so I'm looking, I'm just thinking of, of the first six here.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that is what's. I use that, you would be coming like. To the. Having a zoning committee.
Okay. Okay.
And that would be definitely called right up to that. And we are going to be having a planning and zoning, um, meeting in the gym.
Okay.
So I told you if you thought you were having that, I did not mind any part. It's not the understanding at all, but I am aware of it, so I'm going to have to send some paperwork out.
Okay.
That's down.
Okay.
So February. Third day. Who should I be? Yeah, you can give us any one of. Okay. Matter of fact, here, there, papers in on my, I guess I like a lot of them and I could kind of fill you in on what we feel at this.
Uh, sure.
Yeah, I have a, it's a before, it's not.
The patent will have done the house for this. Oh, I was understanding it was you or you didn't like.
Yeah.
This is why you're here.
Right, yeah.
So it's, you're going to have to give me a little bit of time after that and then we'll get it back on top.
Okay, okay.
So that's, but yeah, you can give me a call.
No, I have training.
I'll call you, I have somebody right on top of my desk.
Okay, sure, that's nice.
Okay, sorry, here's, here's your, for this, I actually call. Okay, all right, very good.
See the light of things a little bit, so.
Sure.
Great. So we'll take a very long day on the job. Relaxing. And it's. The work, sir. Work for dinner. Oh, we, we're so excited. But it's not part of the world, it's just. But it's, so still, it's, it's. I don't want to have. Present. Give me the bull's teeth. So, I just, okay, I obviously. That's. Yeah, particularly with your appearance.
I'm not a conference. Sitting behind, so everybody else is like. Oh, good.
Do you have any news?
No. I'm Japanese. Well, maybe. What happens?
All right. Back at it here. This is my work session. So it's. Oh, we will. Follow this meeting order. This is the regularly, yeah, council meeting. For our first council meeting, January ninth, twenty twenty-four, it is seven point five. And we have council member Mary Rainville participating via Zoom from five six oh one highway A one eight, unit two hundred, Indian shores, Florida, three two nine six three. Anyone wishing to participate from this location in Florida is welcome and should call six one two nine six four five two two eight for assistance in doing so. So Mary will be with us via speakerphone right now because our bigger system isn't working the way it should. Now hopefully residents, as you watch this live or recording of this, if you're having any trouble hearing us or seeing what's going on here, please contact the office and let us know your experience. And we have had some feedback that some people in town here with either internet service, we're not quite sure what it is. But they're not able to hear our recordings very much. Um, others say it's coming through loud and clear. So if you have experiences one way or the other, please let us know. Uh, we're doing what we can to broadcast live and then also have the recording and availability of all our needs. Um, so we will start with the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to raise the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands, my nation, I am proud, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Laner, would you call roll?
Sir. Mayor Keelon, the president, council member Randall. Council member Alders.
Here.
Council member Brian.
Here.
Council member Flatable.
Here.
Chief deputy Jacobson.
Yes, sir.
Deputy clerk Johnson.
Here.
And your city administrator, Scott Laner's presence will cause completed, sir.
Thank you. We're going to put this in six hundred business.
That was my suggestion.
All right. So I have a couple of recommendations for the agenda tonight. We have an addition we got from our attorney. We've been working with Comcast on this contract. Um, many, many hours. I think we're down to the, the last item and it has to do with the business subsidy agreement cable franchise language. So I would like to add that to, um. Ten B, make that number six on ten B. We, uh, in a consent agenda, we do not have a treasury report available for tonight. And so that will be forwarded to us, so it might be available tonight. So as, as you look at the consent agenda, strike the treasury report. I would like to pull consent agenda for A. Uh, second part of that work session leaving minutes for December fourteenth, we put that down. Uh, items ten C, remove some consent agenda. And I would like to pull item four F on the consent agenda. Nicole on merit increases and accepts that as item ten C two. Councilor Brian.
Um. I don't ask, we fold it, we fold the discussion, then I pull item four H, I just had a question about if that was in. The potential for the weapon or not. If we don't know, then let's leave it down. What do we?
We don't know if it's going to be, they're pushing to have it included with the primary.
I've heard. It, I've heard.
That's why there's still some change.
Let's pull, let's pull it and draw it. So four H. Mr. Mayor. Is that? Councilor Alders?
Uh, ten B one. Uh, which is nine, it's gonna do to the February council meeting.
Yep. And so, uh, ten B one. Move to February, so we can tape on that at that time. And on our agenda, obviously, the work session, finalized personnel policies, that was work session helping for this, so it's. If anybody's expecting this, that was a prior meeting, and that was recorded. So that discussion is beyond the line. Anything else? On the, to amend the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Just a little way here. I promise that new council members are gonna be patient and. Not a question.
I just wanna make sure I have.
So I have a move consent agenda, four A minutes.
Yep.
Four F, the cola. And four H. The election.
Nothing.
And. And then, obviously, ten B one.
Right.
It's not ready to go free tonight. Anything else? Mary, anything?
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Now, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve the agenda and amend it.
Okay.
And a motion, Councilman Bryant, second Councilman Flattable. All those in favor, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both. Most secure. Now, we, we have nobody here that signed up for the public forum, welcome, Mike. And so we will go to the consent agenda. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Both.
Second.
Move the motion. Councilman Brian moves. Councilman Flattable seconds. Uh, for the record, things will be approving on the consent agenda tonight. And their single vote. It'd be the city council meeting minutes from December twelfth, twenty twenty three. Approval of claims, December eighth, twenty twenty three, through January fifth, twenty twenty four. No treasuries report. Uh, item C, approval of resolution in twenty twenty four, accepting a dividend. Eleven hundred and twenty seven dollars from the Lake of Minnesota City Defense Trust Fund. Uh, D, approval of resolution designated city administrator as the city's responsible authority for twenty twenty four. I have the approval of resolution from twenty four, establishing city council. Annual appointments and official appointments to commissions, committees, local government authorities, and official designations for twenty twenty four. And, uh, item G, approval of resolution requesting, uh, request from Heritage Festival, all intercommunities to waive rental fees, deposits, and associated costs. Associated with the twenty twenty four Heritage Festival. Including financial and staff support. And item H does move down. Uh, for discussion. For those items there, all those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post.
This is.
Councilmember Rainier.
It's my understanding that, as we're taking a vote, it needs to be a roll call, because I am Rainier.
Okay. So. All those in favor of the consent agenda as amended, please signify individually. Councilmember Alders.
True.
Councilman Bryant.
Aye.
Councilman Flattable. Councilmember Rainier.
Aye.
Mayor Pealan. Aye. Most cares. Thank you for that. Engineering, we have nothing. Fires are pardons. So as is our, our new contract. Keith Schmidt, or his representative, will only be at the meetings quarter. Um, we'll be continuing to send the reports in. We are. Soon to be up and running with the new records management system. Which will affect reports we're getting in the future. And we should expect this for at least another month. Uh, the December response times to twenty, uh. Twenty-two compared to twenty twenty three. Uh, we. We approved. From thirteen and a half minutes to twelve. Uh, point four nine. Uh, December's calls for service, twenty twenty two, we have fifteen, twenty twenty three, December, we had twelve. Average number of firefighters per response has gone up. From four point five to five point one. And the fire runs versus EMS runs. Uh, we had eight fire runs compared to five last year, and we have. Four. Uh, EMS runs compared to twelve, it's nice to see EMS manageable. One month of December twenty twenty three, the fire department responded to twelve incidents, nine less than the previous month. November. Average response time of twelve minutes, forty-nine seconds, one minute, forty seconds improvement from November. The average number of firefighters standing calls was five point one. Fire department reports no download loss from the fires in the month of December. Fire department in those calls assisted other agencies four times in the month of December. December third, fire department, along with. Okay, Sheriff's Office and St. Francis Police Dispatch reported multiple people who had broken through the ice in the body of water. Twenty. Twenty-two, uh. One hundred, block of Garnett. Fire department assisted. The Sheriff's Department rescuing all parties off the water due to quick actions. Okay, Nook County Sheriff's Department, St. Francis Streets, and other fire personnel, all parties were successfully gotten rescued off the ice, and I believe that included the dog. And very quickly. So, um, if you haven't seen that on national news or local news, that was, that was quite again. And. Well, I got. Maybe three instances since then from the state. Ice is still not safe. December fourth, fire department assisted overall in a structural fire. December twenty-fifth, fire department assisted Ramsey on a structural fire. December twentieth, the fire department hosted a family holiday event, venison feed at the fire station. And I understand that one very well. Um. We appreciate the, the family. Uh, camaraderie there. And certainly the venison feed. It's greatly appreciated. Fire department will be training in our new records management system on January seventeenth, and anticipate going live with the new software on February first. This new records management system is being implemented in every fire department in the Minnesota county. Anybody having questions, if they want, forwarded back to the fire department. We have trainees going through, I believe we got four people going through, firefighters in one, right? There will be another recruitment out, else coming up in March. April. In April. It will be notified about, but if you know anybody who's looking to join the fire department, please get the word out. All right. Sheriff's Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council members of the city of Nowland, my name is Phil Jacobson, I serve as the chief deputy for. You know, we call the sheriff's office and as the city liaison for the city of Nowland, I have for you the report for December two thousand twenty-three. In December, we responded to a total of one hundred and twenty-three calls for service. That puts us at a total of one thousand five hundred and fifty-two for the year. That's one hundred and fifteen calls over the twenty twenty-two total. Some calls of note, four, we're to the bar nine facility, one alarm call, nine medical calls, and twenty animal calls. Excuse me. Few other calls over to the bar nine facility. On the third, nine twenty-six P M, we responded to a report of a medical. The victim, a juvenile male, was transported via ambulance to a hospital for care. Uh, we were actually there later again that night on follow-up for the first medical. This actually stemmed from an incident that happened in another county. Uh, the victim of this medical, uh. Was moved to this facility, uh, and was staying at this facility after that other incident, and now, um, needed some medical care, so that's how we.
Related to the incident in the other county?
It sounds like it. Uh, they were at a different facility, something happened at that facility that, uh, had them moved to the facility here in Nowland, and then, uh. There was some follow-up to that, that we tried to help the other county with, so that. Brought us out there twice that day, once for the medical, and then later in the day, on some follow-up that evening, so.
Was the fire department involved in that too, or just?
I believe they responded to the original medical call. They wouldn't have been on the follow-up, because I think they asked for. The deputies only on that.
Yeah.
On the fourteenth, uh, nine thirty-seven P M, we responded to a disorderly conduct situation. Deputies arrived, they mediated a dispute between a couple of the folks that are staying there, um. No charges were requested, we basically were there to sort of mediate, no injuries. More of a disorderly than an assault on that one. And then on the twenty-ninth, at ten twenty-seven P M, we responded to the campus on a report of a juvenile female in a crisis, um. Upon arrival, she was totally cooperative with us and was transported for crisis care, um. That's one of the routine calls we do see at that facility, we find the time, and folks need care outside of the scope of the facility. Couple other incidents from around the city in December, we did already talk about the call that happened on the third, I'll touch base, uh, on it just briefly. On the third, at three thirty-five P M, we responded with a number of other, um, area of public safety agencies, including Nowland Fire. Um, on a report of, uh, multiple people that had gone through the ice. The two-two-four-hundred block of Garnett Street, I couldn't find a name for that body of water, is that just sort of a pond, or, I was on the map trying to find a name, but.
I'd almost seen it as a pond.
Yeah.
I think it was. Excavated.
Ah.
Towards sand.
Well, the, the, the pond was sufficiently deep enough to be very dangerous, um. And as the mayor already pointed out, ice conditions are still extremely unpredictable, we've had. If you're watching the, the, the Minnesota news and some of the national news, um, we've had some very warm temperatures that have created unpredictable ice, and so we encourage people. Even if you feel like you're really experienced on, on, um. Assessing the ice conditions, please be extra careful, um. In this case, as many of you saw, uh, there was, there was risk to our team to, to, to try to rescue the folks that were out there. And obviously, that's our job, uh, us in the fire department will be there, as soon as you call, we're gonna be there, but we hope to not be needed, so we just encourage people to be extra safe. In this case, as many of you had already seen, we, uh, uh, we had a deputy that went up on the ice, uh, and was able to effect a rescue with assistance from the shore. Both folks were, um. Were, were removed from the water, and the dog, and the equipment, and it was. All in all, a very successful day, given how those have turned out in the past, and how they can turn out, uh, with water temperatures as cold as they are. Um, again, we encourage people, please be careful on the ice out there. Uh, on the twenty-first, at one oh seven P M, you received a dumping complaint from a private residence in the eighty-three hundred block. Of a hundred and eighty-first. As is common now, this person had cameras, they were, um, the victim of ongoing sort of dumping on their property. Which can happen in rural areas, but this person did have cameras. Our deputy did a nice job, notes and follow-up, identifying the license plate and making contact with somebody, but. Um, the evidence wasn't there that they had actually dumped anything, just that their vehicle was there, and they were on the property, so. And that, uh, that was a trespassing discussion with that, uh, with that person, and that address is an extra patrol address for us right now.
Chief, chief deputy, can we, can I go back to the one before that?
Yes.
Um. Does the Sheriff's Department have anything planned for deputy Pealan?
We're in the planning stages of an award ceremony, the Sher, uh, traditionally, we had, um. We did a real formal award ceremony that took place at the Sheriff's Office. In our community room, uh, the Sheriff's vision moving forward is more of a casual evening event, where the deputies are just gonna be with each other and, and, and do an award, I think that. Uh, if he has not been already, he will be nominated for, um, for a lifesaving award for that, uh, for his actions there. Certainly, we, uh, we would, we would welcome him coming here too, if, if you guys would like, we'd love to have him here, so.
We, we would like that.
Sounds good, we'll, uh, arrange that.
I, I, I know he's. He is all in the line of duty, and, and we certainly talked about that, but I do think it's important to recognize. Absolutely. Putting their life on the line for us, very evident.
Absolutely, and in this case, um. It was the right deputy in the right place at the right time. Uh, Deputy Feld, being one of our highest trained, uh, water rescue deputies, um. Uh, ma- made a call that was risky, but given his assessment of the victim's condition was the right call, in my opinion, and. Had a number of follow-up meetings with the fire chief, uh, and, uh, the, the assisting police agencies and fire agencies, and. Um, some lessons learned for sure, but, um. Successful day, and we'll, we'll arrange to have him come in, um, and I'll work with the administrator, and we can arrange that if that works. Uh. On the twenty-fifth, at twelve thirty-four P M. We responded to the area of St. Francis Boulevard and Viking Boulevard on a report of a possible impaired driver. Uh, the nine-one-one caller, this one reported, uh, to have seen a vehicle crossing the centerline, struck it over construction cones. Um, the deputy, of course, was close by here in Nowland, and located the vehicle affected a traffic stop. Stop the vehicle, the deputy had a sense something wasn't right, started screening the driver as we normally do. Standard field sobriety testing, alcohol testing, kind of assessing what might be going on. And this situation, it turned out to be a medical emergency that was kind of unfolding, um, which caused the driving conduct, no signs of impairment, and, um. Deputy recognized it was a medical right away, and was able to call, uh, call for medical care amounts. But we do appreciate whoever called, because, um, those many times do end in crashes, um, especially if someone who's, uh, suffering some type of diabetic emergency or something, they can lose control of their vehicle, so. On the twenty-seventh, is one of the animal calls we responded to, um. Two-two-seven hundred block of Ovine Street, uh, this was a complaint of chickens and hens from a neighboring property. Coming on a caller's property, something like a caller was able to capture on video, so. Um, the, the deputy responded out there, was able to mediate it, this apparently has been an ongoing problem at this address, so, um. We did, we did a little follow-up, we. What's? I don't, he just looked at it, and I just said, first time I've heard of that one. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. The recording party, uh, told, told our deputy anyway that this was a, was a ongoing problem, so. Um, our deputy, uh, went, went back and was able to establish ownership of the, uh, of the chickens and, um. Hens, and, uh, made sure they got home safely, and was, uh, issued a warning in that case, so.
There, there's some simple solutions to that. Uh, there are chicken dinner, and.
Well. We, uh, certainly appreciate the resident calling and helping us get in there to help them, yeah, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
How many chickens were, I'm just curious, do you know how many chickens? I mean, this is, for me, this is kind of entertainment, I'm like, it's not a dog this time, and I'm thinking, wow. So I was just curious, was it a lot of chickens?
Mr. Mayor, council member, I, I don't know the number, but it was, it was enough that it was visible on the video of a group of them, so. Not, not sure the number that had, uh.
I, I believe they have a Guinea fowl as well.
Oh. Yeah, they, they get up longer.
And they don't ever stop. Uh, anyway, the owners. Will keep their.
Yes.
Hands loose thing at home.
We, uh, yeah, yes, sir, we did issue a warning in that case, and hopefully that's resolved. Um, a- as you will have noticed on the report, we did see a high number of animal calls in Nowland for December. Uh, I went through and just kind of looked at what these calls are, because twenty is a high number for animal calls, and. It was multiple, multiple found dogs, multiple lost dogs. Multiple loose, uh, livestock calls, uh, they'll be in the roadway or off their property, and. Um, some of the larger livestock, uh, obviously. We do ask people to call, because we want to make sure they're not in the roadway, that can be dangerous, so. We also have a parking, parking dog report, and one of the, we had an animal welfare check, someone called. Was concerned about a goose that they saw that they thought was out of sorts a bit, so, uh, a deputy investigated, but wasn't able to locate the. The goose in the area, so presumably the goose was okay, but, um, we, uh.
Some of the food is, is ripened quite a bit, and it might have fermented, so sometimes that affects the yeast, too.
Ah, okay.
I don't know if they. Would be a careful test of the goose.
I'm not sure how you would approach that, actually. So, uh.
Yeah, people actually bid for this.
To work in Nowland?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, the, the junior deputies get bought off of working out then by the senior deputies. So they can just come out here and live in farm country, because. It's nice up here.
We think so.
Yeah. Hey, who's, uh, some other, uh, some other things around the, uh. Uh, around the, uh, city, we wrapped up twenty twenty-three, I think some of the trends. Arrests of all types are up, um, as you'll see in the report. Um, you know, that includes pretty much all custodial type arrests, what that means, it could be a very various. You'll see that traffic's, traffic stops are down, but traffic arrests, uh, were pretty similar to last year, so. Could be a sign of deputies picking specific vehicles to stop or targeting enforcement differently. Could be a sign of deputies picking specific vehicles to stop or targeting enforcement differently. Uh. Uh, vehicle crashes are down, um. As we talked about burglaries are up, uh, we talked about that last month, uh burglaries, especially as some of the um. Some of the storage facilities are are continuing to promise on our radar. And I talked with the patrol division commander after last month's meeting and they're. It's on the radar as well. We're trying to come up with some creative technology solutions to try to try to help us with that problem. Bar none calls are down and animal animal complaints are up over last year.
Twenty one month to that.
Twenty one month is a lot, yes. Uh. As the year rolls over, uh, our, we have deputies across the county moving in and out of city contracts. Deputy Fell is staying here in now then for twenty twenty four. Deputy Matthew Pups, who some of you may have met yet, maybe not, but um. He's your, he's your new deputy here in now then. Uh, we're gonna arrange to have him here to introduce himself. Shoot for February so he can. Put a put a face to a name and ask him some questions, get to know him a little bit and bring him in. He'll be here throughout the year. And then, of course, um.
Deputy Barrett's Hops?
Hops, yeah. Uh, Deputy Barrett moved to a countywide position, so he'll be a countywide Rover car. So you'll still see him um in now then from time to time. Uh, out of contract hours, you may see the the county whites here or responding to larger calls, which will succeed here, so.
Uh, we we do appreciate if you would extend our appreciation to Deputy Barrett. A wonderful job here. It's nice. As a training officer to see the recruits, he he was working through the system. We appreciated his work for us.
Absolutely. I will pass that on and that um. Probably the majority of new deputies we hired in twenty twenty three. Spent a lot of their time here in now then with him learning. He's one of our more experienced training officers. And of course, you've met some of the younger deputies coming through the city throughout the year that uh. Uh, we're we're learning from him and learning in now then, so. So it's a good city for that as well. So um, as the mayor knows, sometimes. Our newer folks aren't always successful out here, but um. And I think we had a really good year when it comes to hiring and um. I'll pass on to Deputy Barrett that uh you guys appreciate his time here, so.
Mm hmm.
Um, that's all I have from my report. I'm happy to stand for any questions or clarifications.
Council. Mary.
Oh, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
So in talking to one of the deputies, and I don't know if they've talked with you yet, chief, but um. When we go back to the many storage facilities, what the information that I'm gathering on that, they're saying that. It may not be multiple. Break-ins, it may be one or two, but it takes months. And the recent one that they just shared with me last week. This person hasn't been back to their storage locker since like twenty twenty one, and now they notice it. So are you? Is that your understanding? Also, I'm just looking to clarify maybe some alone I'm hearing that it's not. Ten of them happening at all different times. It just the reports kind of trickle and as these people are seeing their.
They could have all had it at one time.
Correct. Or like one, yeah, yeah. Is that is that your understanding also?
Excuse me, Mister Mayor, yes, Mister Mister Minister, that is my understanding is while that. It's really hard to nail down when these are occurring because, as the mayor pointed out, it could be. Uh, a a day where someone goes in and commits six or seven burglaries. And then their storage units, they're there, that stops in there because people don't need it all the time. They store it, so. Uh, that that is what it appears to be. Every one of those reports I've seen come through have been delayed. The the last time they had been at the facility. Um, it's significantly delayed when they discovered them, the burglaries, so. Um, it's one of the challenges of those types of facilities.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, update.
Yeah, yes, under the administrator update, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to just kind of give you an update. I think we'll talk about it a little bit more on one of the. Uh, agenda items that you pulled down when we we get into uh four F, but I just want to let you know that uh. Performance evaluations, performance reviews are on track. Um, they're being conducted, will be done by the end of the month and will be done in con- in conjunction with uh. The call on merit increases that we talked about, and we'll talk about a little further here in a few months, so. So I'll be giving you an update of where we are there. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Schedule, um, Scott's review. How you do? And Shannon and I will be talking about that in the next. And the intention is to uh decide on a format. And then have the council participate in that. Uh, obviously, everybody's fully informed what goes on forty hours plus a week. But we do want to uh put together. The things that we have. Noticed. Well, to guide the input objectively and then look at what we want to see in the program, and that's the fun of it. Everybody will get a chance to just leave that one, but schedule that. Um, everybody just thought when we talk about the code, we that. What we like to do is, in conjunction with that, make an adjustment to his compensation. From last year, so that whatever is adjusted this year is built upon that. That way, our like the recommended costs. Uh, old business, uh, our attorney, uh, Mister Glazer. And that responded in our request for how we process uncompliant properties. Nor has he sentenced a bill in over ten months. So that will be something when it does come, they will have to be backdated to uh twenty twenty three, so it's quite a lot. We'll have to pay that out of our twenty twenty three funds, but. Now, we are struggling to get any responses. I understand it still. So we are, we had heard nothing and not even been billed, but we're assuming prosecution's still going on, but. My recommendation is if we don't get something soon, then we probably have our civil attorney. Uh, contact prosecuting attorney, at least get our bills big up and then as a as a city, we set aside this and we want to keep our. But that has been. Issue ATV ordinance update still uh still out there? Councilmember Rango.
I have a question on that. Um, but I'm the agenda for a few months, and I mean, I understand that, but. But my my question is, do we really know what it is? That was initially complained about and has there been any actual formal complaint? Registered with the city? Has this person contacted anybody? Whether it be an elected official or city staff, saying, why haven't you done anything?
Are we talking about the ATV ordinance?
Yes. I mean, at at this point, I mean, if we haven't done anything, no one else is complaining. I say pick it up and let them, but.
Mr. Mayor, that's just my thought. Councilwoman Flatt.
Um, Councilmember, um, Rainville. Two council members were contacted for that. And there was discussion and then, yes, um, I don't know if you were contacted again. I was contacted again. Um, twice after we had um talked about it and we're to it off when we're gonna do a workshop on it. And this person followed up twice and I said we would have it. We would be discussing it, but they would have to wait for a while because we had prior business. I was hoping for our co-report to be done. Um, they did contact me again in October. And I said we were full again that we just had so much to do on council with budgeting and everything else. That we weren't sure when we were gonna get it in, but we would get it done and discussed as soon as we could.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rango.
Councilwoman Flatt, Councilwoman Flatt, I guess, can we, if I don't. I don't know what the complaint was. If either you or the other council member. I think it was council member Alders. I could be wrong. Uh, can you submit that to staff? And then that can come out to at least me or anybody else. I don't know what the complaint was. I don't know whether looking for us to change, you know, what what the issue is, and so. I I actually would like that back in the fall.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Flatt.
Um, the, it wasn't really a complaint. It was more a request. They wanted to know about golf carts. They wanted to know about, um. They wanted to basically, we wanted to, we needed to update our ordinance. So it was basically on ordinance is what it was. And we had had a whole discussion about it, and then it was put back to staff. Um, and then staff came back with a few things, but we decided at that council meeting that we would. Have a workshop about that and discuss the ordinance itself. And work out the details on um the golf carts. Legal, legal wise, what can be ridden on our roads, things such as that.
Good. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rango.
So councilwoman Flatt, so it's what's what's that there basically request is that we allow golf carts on all city roads?
Um, that was one of their requests that they wanted to, yes, have golf carts allowed. And um that the ordinance would be updated because it was vague. And so we would know about ATVs and what exactly was allowed and what was disallowed. As far as I recall.
So so let me, let me suggest we'll put it off again for a month. Um, as we've had some discussions about code compliance and ordinance update. Um, as we have some staffing, uh, potential staffing changes going on, I think we can, we can address that. As we get set it in with with responsibilities of the current and new staff. That's all right with council?
That's right. Thank you.
Um, number three, we're going to choose and approve the mayor, so.
I vote to approve.
Uh, and we're looking at existing contract development fish and co enforcement sector, sector compliance. Uh, this is still in process as we discussed last month. That's gonna come up at a February meeting. Uh, staff is working on the the. Uh, comparisons, so we have a spreadsheet that shows. Uh. What what we would be benefiting uh from both parties. And what will be changing, so. We'll have that prior to our February meeting and we should be able to make a decision in February and a little forward like we discussed. And uh, that will also be where we can discuss fee schedule changes. That's in the process. It'd be nice if we do that whole package at once rather than piecing it all up again. Old business continues on. Councilmember Rango.
Mr. Mayor, I'm fee scheduled. I've been working on the reimbursement request for the colony. Yeah, um, one of the things we're finding is that sometimes cars has more to. They have, it sure does all, um. We're getting and renting a lot. Because that will be, I don't believe I'll have it ready by February because I'm still working on the June port. Um, so it might be later in the year that we may we may need to do some additional jobs that are specifically settled. In regards to our recent fees, so they are hopefully equipping our tasks for. Have they should be putting in the one and not as much as the other, but um. And they'll say that the first is less, so.
Right, well, that uh. If if that needs to be, if part of the fee schedule can be updated before that, and we have to wait on that, that would too. But there's a number of things we need to clean up on the fee schedule.
Right.
All right, new business, ten B. We moved approving personnel policy updates to our next month. And we would like to introduce a new city planner being recommended by staff. To fill us currently open planner position. So Scott, would you please introduce Cindy?
Absolutely. Cindy, if you'd like to step up here. So I asked, uh, you guys are all up to speed on kind of what's been going on with uh the sitting planner position. Um, Cindy's here with us tonight to kind of just a- answer a few questions. In your packet, you see some detailed information on her. She's got a resume in there. Uh, some of the places that she's been working, uh, some of the things that'll jump out to you. She's been doing this uh for twenty eight years. Uh, I did do some backgrounds, um, meeting, talked with some references, talked to folks that she works with currently and as previous. Uh, she also um has relationships and works with some of the people that we currently are working with right now, too. Our engineering firm, our city attorney, and so on and so forth. So my. My intent to have Cindy here tonight is is not necessarily a presentation, but kind of a meet and greet to. To ask any questions if you see. I'm not gonna go back to all the things that um she has in in her information, but a couple of things that jumped out at me that. Were exciting and hopefully you'll be as excited about as I I was, is um. Brand writing and documentation. I I think that's important and I really like seeing that as part of her. The informational packet here, and uh if you take a look at it, you can see uh some of the areas, you know, the development. Reviews, economic development, so on and so forth. I promised you I wasn't gonna read this all to you, uh, but uh. I've talked to quite a few folks and done some. Research on 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 our side, and uh my recommendation is is that we would move forward and have Cindy fill our. Open planner position uh immediately. With that, I will let Cindy.
I will, I will say that I'm also aware that you have talked with others. This is not the only person you've talked to. Uh, this is the person we're most impressed with. Sheriff Say.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I did, uh, including Cindy, I did talk to two other um. Companies, if you will, or individuals that do the finding stuff. So yes, Cindy is not the only person. Uh, but quickly moved to the top of my list and uh been very impressed with. Our dialogue, our conversations and our back and forth that we've been having here for the last probably six, well, probably almost couple of months now that we first started talking, but. Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing that up. That is absolutely correct.
All right, we'll be quizzing you on everything that I have.
Okay, I'll try to remember everything that, um, thank you for that introduction. Um, Mr. Mayor, my presence of counsel, I appreciate the opportunity and consideration. Um. Scott took half the things I was gonna say, which is just fine. Um, I will say, though, I have had a little bit of experience in now then. Um, about in twenty eighteen, when we were doing the concurrent detachment annexation. I was working on that project a little bit behind the scenes, and so I didn't. I never had the opportunity to come up here and meet anybody, but um. That was something I was doing.
And then, Dan, you would have never remembered that.
Uh, yeah.
And uh, Mary? Again, we didn't meet her at the time, but you would have seen her name on it at that time, so. Mr. Mayor.
So in taking and in talking with Cindy and kind of going through this whole process from the staff side of things. Um, it became evident to us that our previous city planner, um. I don't know if I like this term, but I'm gonna use it because there's been, there's been, there was a little job creep, if you will. Um, the things that um she was taking on that just over the course of time just kind of evolved. I'm not saying it's that thing, whatever. But in talking with Cindy, she strictly um has the ability to do the planning role for us. And and I think it'd be very good for us with with her background, taking a look at some of the ordinance, what kind of, what? What do our ordinancees look like? Do they need to do some changes? Uh, she specializes. It's one of the things out here that she specializes in doing. Um, but I really want to kind of get back to. Strictly a planner role, right? And and some of that you've asked me in the past, so who who's gonna pick up some of these other things? So we have a plan. For code compliance, not to say that she won't have the input when it comes to code compliance, um, but she isn't gonna be. Our number one code compliance officer going out there and talking to folks like we may have had in the past and so on and so forth. I have a plan for that. That's still coming in the February meeting. Know that it didn't fall on deaf ear and it's being addressed. But what she specializes in and what she's been doing for twenty eight years is really what we're looking at, trying to bring things back and then what does a planner do? And how do they do it? And how can they help us with some of these other things that she has?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Flatt.
So Scott, I guess I have a question for both of you then. As far as what I've heard from our um constituents. Is that they love our small community. So I'm assuming that. Um, I was looking at your, you work with Carter. And that is a small community, but it's also very close to the cities and they have spread out. They become larger. They. Cities have cre- creeped in. It has become more of a, um, it's getting bigger and bigger. Let's put it that way. We know that that is coming. Though about preserving that is, I'm gonna ask it because there there are people that I talked about that there are concerned with. With the cities creeping in too much. Is that something that you're willing to work with our people like that and and keep our city? The way that it goes right now, I mean.
Yes, great question. Um, so it's all about establishing your vision for the community and setting things up to meet that vision. So every community is different and yes, Carter is basically attached to the metro area now.
Right.
Um, but that was a goal. They were geographically already there as well. Um. I also work for Critic River, which is a very rural community. It does not have water and sewer. They will, um, they will be working that way. I work with um. They will, um, they will be working that way, I work with um. Um, Bridgewater Township down in Rice County, and they will never have. They will never have true water and sewer, they may have some CSCS on the way, but um, and their focus is preserving. Um, rural atmospheres and especially preserving agriculture, they're looking at, we're doing a lot of interesting things with regenerative agriculture and. Different things on there that are um, you know, clearly we can see in a metro area complex, for example. Um, and then I, I do work on projects in other places like Autumn Canyon, I call you other places that are very similar.
And one other question, um. As far as there will be projects, I'm assuming that Liz was, was working on that are still out there. That need to be continued, but am I correct on that, some of that?
Uh, very few.
Very few, okay.
Very few, like two.
Oh, okay, so, but, so with that being said, that there are projects that you are working on, I'm assuming that. There can be certain subjective components of those that. I'm hoping that you'd be willing and open to be working on it. With that way, I mean. And I'm saying subjective because with every property, there is something that is a little bit subjective where one time you might see it different.
There is, um, and transition is, is always a little bit difficult, and we'll have to sort through some of those. Details and see where those projects were at and. Help us to move this forward.
Okay.
Sure.
So during the course of December, I worked really hard and tried to. To work with Liz on trying to get whatever we could cleaned up, so there were a couple that just kind of, as recently today, I've been working with their city attorney. Uh, like I said, there's two that. Are maybe halfway through the process, two of the individuals who sit in the front row at the beginning, and that was one of other projects. Um, but I believe that sitting down with Cindy, if, if you all. Approve the recommendation, sitting down with Cindy will not take long to get her up to speed ever recently, and um. Our city attorney is going to. To sit down with us also and just make sure that we're working through those processes, so I think the transition, um. It can be very, very soon, very soon, the residents aren't fully ready to feel much of that.
Anything else from council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Albers.
Uh, details of the contract, we have like a stop date is a sixty day term, I mean, what, what does that look like? Once that we have said.
If I may, the contract doesn't have a notice date in it, so if you are unhappy with my performance. I will always work through a transition if that's your desire to move to somebody else, but I never. Want for the council to bond you to have a um, notice period, if you're unhappy, I want to respect that and.
Alright, other questions? Mary, anything?
Oh, I, I'm very impressed by what I see. And I, I do see a page three or four, that's a combination I find.
There do you written notice?
Number five.
Chair.
Councilor Rango.
I'm, I'm happy to see the grant writing, so that um. We, we have never been able to um, really take advantage of opportunities. Um, I think the one, what I want grant type agreement is probably why. Applied for one trip to Twins Foundation and we do get a baseball tour. Uh, so, but I think the other stuff out there is probably not as many as the one that passed, but. I used to have some even better experience.
And speak to the grant writing and all, since everybody's excited about that, or is that something you were anticipating?
No, I wasn't anticipating that, I can speak to it, um, I do have some significant experience in grant writing, I. Will be really honest with you that um, not all grants are worth applying for either. A lot of them come with a lot of, they're really small, they come with a lot of red tape and your. Reporting time is not necessarily worth that red tape, so um. Happy to work with you on grants, and at the same time, I hope you'll um. Allow me to make suggestions sometimes when I think some of them may not be worth applying for.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Rango.
I, I completely agree with Ms. Mayor, some of them are just two hundred some two, um. Uh, you say requirements for recordings, matching grants, um, my focus would be to look at grants. Um, for within our town system. You what can we do to um, enhance our plans, just even equipment, um. New playground equipment, things like that, is something that would help us to um. Be able to operate some of that.
One of, one of the things we hadn't asked was the planner was working on the parking trail plan. One of the things gets people excited about here, we're looking at through streets, you know what, as we develop more. Right now, there's not a lot of excitement over parks because everybody can recreate on their own property. Um, nobody's excited about through streets because. You have forty acres, who cares where the roads go, you certainly don't come to my property. But we actually have some long range planning in that as well, so, so that will be part of our discussion on chairs. What are, what are the people requesting? Services right now, but what do we have to look at down the road?
Absolutely.
I've seen you've done, you work on other comprehensive plans as well, so.
Yes.
But clearly understood, the majority of this community wants to stay rural, so I'm going to move out here. So we'll envelop accordingly. Anything else from the council? Ms. Nash, anything else for us?
I do not have anything else, but thank you for the opportunity and I hope you'll consider it.
Thank you for your willingness to work with us. I will accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Rango.
We approve resolution twenty twenty four Nash, uh, a program to hire Cindy Nash and. Finding out also to cut our contract to see whether it affected tomorrow.
Oh, second. Motion Councilman Rango, second, Councilmember Albers, any other questions or discussions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. I'm sorry, welcome. Councilmember Albers.
Aye.
Councilmember Bryan.
Aye.
Councilman Flattable.
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Rango.
Aye.
And Mayor Pilon, aye. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Welcome to the PM City.
Thank you. Uh, adding number three, number three. For Chief Schmidt, Personnel Committee to create job description and posting for fire chief position.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Bryan. Make a motion to approve the personnel committee, the minister general, and Chief Schmidt to begin, to create a job description and. For the um, fire department chief and posted it, so it's possible.
Yeah, motion, Councilman Bryan.
I'll say it.
Second from Councilman Rango. Any other further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. I'm sorry. Councilmember Albers, aye. Councilman Bryan, aye. Councilman Flattable.
Aye.
Councilman Rango.
Aye.
Mayor Pilon, aye. Motion carries. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Bryan. I'll make a motion to approve the joint powers agreement between the City of Melbourne and the City of Ramsey. Or the um, road improvement project um, down in the Rogers Lake area.
And motion by Councilman Bryan.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Albers, any other discussion, questions?
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Bryan, I just didn't see anything that would jump out at me that could raise any red flags, and if this is going, you know. This will be the first time that we've done this, so let's give it a shot, see how it works out.
Alright.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Rango.
I'm just wondering, let's. Wondering what, what the city of Ramsey, um, are, are we receiving any cost benefit? Um, in going with the larger project and.
The experts, the expectation that we've been told from the engineering firm is that uh. We would experience, you can't quantify it, but it would be, because Ramsey is also, they're doing about three million dollars worth of work this year. And by bidding this all up together, they do expect there'd be a cost savings on material, they're certainly looking. Expedience to the neighborhood because you won't have two different projects going on and people uh, doing things at different times. And they're coming in with the same curbing people, the same maintenance people, so by using the same. People, it should go faster, should be uh, much less confusion to the neighborhood, and there should be. Cost savings, we haven't been guaranteed any particular amounts or percentage. But they, they are, they are doing about three million dollars in expenses, so that, bid it all up to one company.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at this point, we don't know a cost.
We do not, well, the engineering uh, will be done in conjunction with Ramsey, and we'll be getting that for the future hearing.
And so at this point, we can still vote on this part, but if the cost is something we don't want, we can still.
There, there's still, we do have to have another public hearing, and until we actually let out a bid, uh, we can back out in the meantime. Once we let out a bid, then we are stuck paying for it. And then we can still back out. Until we know what the cost are, we can't even say yes. Alright, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Councilmember Albers.
Aye.
Councilman Bryan.
Aye.
Councilman Flattable.
Aye.
Councilmember Rango.
Aye.
Mayor Pilon, aye. Motion carries. Right, I'm trying something new, we've talked about it for years here, we have a, a calendar. Um, I tried to take a look at, at meeting dates and where we might bump into things, like you sometimes do in August and November. Um. Again, this isn't uh. Comprehensive, I mean, this is much, many things that we could come up with uh, off the top of our heads. Do you have something else you'd like to see on there? Or something that you think is unneeded and make it less cluttered? But here's the idea, we like to see people's anniversaries, we want to see our meetings, um. Probably should put the. Holidays in different colors so they don't look like fireproofing.
There were only so many colors.
But again, uh. There'll be legal information here, different meetings, so the watershed, the emergency management, the fire protection council. And as you can see, the, the voting. Starts really early, it's not a long time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
We um, did get an email today, just if you wanted, if anybody wants to go to a local government official meeting, they actually moved it to the thirtieth. So I do have that corrected on the one, and if you have an outlook email that you want me to send this to so that you can share the calendar with us. Um, I will certainly do that, otherwise I'll just try to keep it updated, and if you want it month by month, let me know.
Mayor. Sorry, I suppose if we get to the point where we can get you all um. Your own city emails, so you're not using individual emails, then we will have the ability to be able to send that to you and go right into your calendar. We're not there yet, we're working paper, as you already alluded to, this is our first kind of swipe at it. Um, I think it's pretty encompassing, but by no means is it everything, but. It will be a working document, it will get you guys a city email, so it'll be more interactive than it is today, but this is a step in the right direction. Um, I was able to be put on the Fire, thank you, the Fire Protection Council Finance Committee. The only elected official, they've been along on there so far. Um, and it was surprising, our first meeting in December, how much was forgotten from my meetings last year. Unfortunately, I have to remember a lot of things, and, and so what we have asked is we have a draft budget at this January meeting, you see on the twenty fifth. We'll pick up a draft budget, we'll bring that back to the council, and we have a chance to ask questions and beat it up, and then we'll vote on it. And the April meeting, if twenty fifth, so that'll be. We never had a chance to do much, so it is beneficial to be on the committee. Uh, and again, you can see we're starting our capital improvements, we're putting that on here so people can be planned, reporting moves. Jason, you're on the capital improvement, if you need to, don't meet your schedule, let us know. So that we can schedule accordingly.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Rango.
I, I like seeing this, very nice, um, the only question I have. Concern here is uh. Was we have a listing, um, on employees' anniversaries, and I don't know if that information is. Uh.
Is.
Should be available in the immediate time, so just check with the attorney to see. Uh, I mean, you can't tell somebody that shipped an employee is on, um, on any type of documentation, so. I don't know if the anniversary dates are in there, um. So just uh, just check with Ruby on that, so that going forward, we would not have to have to put that in there.
Alright, okay. Um, one notice in the June, the annual conference for LMC is actually a three day. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
I thought I had a free something on.
There's, there's a free on Tuesday, too. Typically, it starts Wednesday morning with the three. Conferences and the conference, don't want to say noon to Friday. Uh, one thing I want to point out in July. Independent Day is on Thursday this year. One of the suggestions was potentially closing Thursday and Friday and having a four day weekend. Again, it's not mandatory, but I think it makes sense, a lot of activity on that Friday. People um, could use their PTL time to take it, it's a recommendation. August, the. Primary election. Is uh, on the thirteenth, so we need to move our council meeting, the recommendation is to move it a week later, Tuesday, the twentieth. Or something in between, so, yeah, a different date, let us know if you think in August, but we can't meet on the primary election day. And again, take a look, anything else, let the staff know.
Mayor.
Councilman Rango.
And uh, election years, they have precinct conferences, the major party that I'm. And you cannot have a government meeting on the night of precinct caucus.
February twenty seventh.
I don't know when.
Cauces are February twenty seventh.
So P and Z, I.
So that's our first P and Z meeting in maybe years.
That's what the caucus is.
Yeah.
Is that both, and both parties are.
That's caucus night.
No board party segment.
Yeah.
So we'll have to move the P and Z. Alright, anything else, get it to staff, like, thank you very much, Natalie, this is great. Uh, we have asked for this for a long time, and this is, this will be really helpful to keep everybody under some.
Mr. Mayor. While we're talking about it, do, do people actually call to the office to ask where caucuses are?
I've not got any, okay. But if you know where they are, we can put them on the website, okay?
That would be helpful. Alright, next on the list is our Comcast. Again, we've been spending a lot of time with lawyers in Pennsylvania and locally. Amazing how complex this whole contract is, they're two on previous experiences, but. With this final piece here, they can start the, the process that they're now wanting to. Start installments. Broadband, and then the spring thaw. So what we've done is, is uh it's been a little different. We weren't aware of this. That's why we had to get all these lawyers involved. We are using a business subsidy agreement. That's why we're using some of our HRA funds uh and some of the ARCA funds on this. And so we have to do this. It's not a typical franchise agreement. And Comcast has used franchise agreements for their cable services. So our attorney is aware of the statute that says that there are going to be less than 1,000 homes served with the cable services. You can get that without franchise agreement. Right now, they're looking to, to service 1,227 homes in Allen at their initial outset. And they don't believe that uh 1,000 of those will take cable. So we can get by with this arrangement to two of their contracts. So this is the last step in the contract after months of negotiation. So with the approval of this resolution tonight, we can keep them moving forward. And hopefully start installing the springs. So if you guys had a chance to look at it quickly here, and it's gone through thoroughly with lots of lawyers and everybody's finally happy. Seems to be.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan.
My reading this is we just got it tonight. Basically, if we have a franchise agreement, then we would have more control over what Comcast could or couldn't do, but we're basically saying if we're under 1,000 weeks, we're, we're in essence waiving that right to control the franchise agreements?
Yes, according to Mr. Ruby, uh if we were to find a proposed franchise agreement, it's a lot of paperwork, a lot of public hearings, a lot of commitments, and there is no benefit to the city. We don't really control what they do. They get to control you know, what others can't do because they got franchise. Scott, you probably know better because you negotiate franchise agreements, but what am I missing?
No, it, it is a lengthy process and um from sitting in these meetings with the lawyers and all that, I think our recommendation and, and there was no need to go through the extra hoops of putting a franchise in, in place. Uh Bob did a good job of pulling out some of the statutes that we needed, but um I'll be very careful. If you don't need a franchise, it's always recommend, don't, don't, don't put one in place if it's not needed. There are certain places that there are certain situations that they are needed. I don't believe in this case, in front of their attorneys and, and, and our attorney, I think they're in agreement. They just weren't sure how they're getting it. They're just used to doing it a certain way and we just have to can say we bonded most of it, but, but uh just had to kind of explain to them where we were coming from. So I think I guess they're doing under 1,000.
Yeah, that's, that's part, that's a big part of it.
And if you're over 1,000, you're gonna pick it up. Implement it. Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan.
There's no other questions. I make a motion to approve the resolution, waiving the right to regulate the cable franchise as drafted for our city.
Motion, Councilmember Bryan. Second, Councilmember Flattball. Any other questions or comments? Saying hearing none, Councilmember Alders.
Aye.
Councilmember Bryan.
Aye.
Councilmember Flattball.
Aye.
Councilmember Rango.
Aye.
Mayor Pilon.
Aye.
Motion's approved. All right, that was removed from the consent agenda. In the meeting minutes for the work session from December 14th. Um there's a couple of things to I think need to be clarified. Why do we have to decide personnel committee? Um this here, if it's bad in a place to reach out, personnel committee if needed, we're already discrimination section. We have down under that section funerally and discussion that the administrator is under contract, therefore untouched by any changes in his policy. Um and I don't think that's accurate. It's certain things that are contracted wouldn't be affected, primarily the PTO. But the, the way the contract reads, if I recall, was that the other aspects of the policy do apply. When the PTO evens out to what he's getting, he moves up the PTO ladder. Uh but that's, that's the only part that I understood didn't apply to that. Specifically contractually to the policy. Um and obviously, there's things we talked about tonight, just like the last work session. Some of this information will not be accurate based on what we decided earlier tonight. So from the so as this goes out, it's public meeting minutes. There's still questions about 80 hours. The payouts, $100,000, those types of things. There'll still be questions from here. So people understand either not final decisions just because they're in the meeting minutes there. Yes, each employee can choose to add life insurance, but not involve it at once. So some of those things we we resolved earlier tonight. So I just wanted to make note that these minutes aren't aren't uh consistent with what decisions were made tonight. They're just minutes from that work session. And yeah.
Mr. Mayor? Are we approving these minutes or are we remanding them? Are they going to be brought back?
I, I would like to amend that one to send that to it and then bring it back for approval next one.
Oh.
To let stay on this draft meeting's website. Right? Item 4F, this is the cost of living and merit increases. And we, we don't have RCA with this one. And so I have a couple of questions and I want to be cautious. I'm not sending the wrong signal, but when we decide in the summer, previous summer, 23, that we would um put a placeholder in our budget for cost of living increases and merit increases. And we always try and emphasize that these are placeholders and that when the time comes, we discuss what's authorized and what's approved. Generally, it's expected we make a case for uh what we're recommending going in. Uh in the past, we've asked for the total price index, CPI or social security adjustments, uh the current government rate of inflation, those types of things to factor in uh to make sure that we're consistent with what we're doing. What we thought six months ago was a good idea is still a good idea. It might be a little might be high depending on how things are. So part of that is make the business case. I think CPI right now is uh 3.1, social security run up 3.2, and inflation's running at 3.8. What I would, would like the council to consider. So that's on the COLA, on the merit pay. Now what? What is the expectation on merit pay? Is that pay that goes in and then you do the COLA? Do you do COLA? Do you do merit pay on the top of that? Because we haven't done merit pay typically. Here's a second, we've done cost of living, we've given some adjustments uh as we, as we do wage studies, but we've never really done this where we do merit. Now, as Scott had mentioned earlier, he's going to have reviews done by the end of this month. And typically, that's where you would be evaluating merit as part of the reviews. In the past, the cost of living has come with a first paycheck. What we discussed briefly during our budget discussion is what is the total impact on compensation? So what I would like to request is that that we um be presented with the current wages and the impact of the cost of living on those wages and the proposal for the merit increase. I personally think that, that our public works, we've been getting by for a long time with a, a rate of pay that uh isn't sustainable. If we were to lose anybody in our public works, I don't know who can replace them or currently paying them. And I would like to recommend that that the merit increase be considered as part of that, bringing them back into line with commensurate responsibilities in other cities. And then I would just like to see what are our 2023 wages per employee? I would like to see the gross pay per employee based on those wages. What did we actually pay this year, which was on the bank for 2023? Uh my experience in the past has been you also do a total compensation package because some people aren't taking the full benefits. And so their compensation package doesn't look as robust as someone who's taking the whole thing. So maybe more regular than you guys are used to. And in my experience, I always had to do a total compensation. Here's the wage. Um here's the, the benefits package and anything else that we're compensating. But I think it's important to know what what the wages were prior to the adjustment, what the gross pay was prior to the adjustment, and what we anticipate that being for 2024 with the benefits package. And then the merit impact after the reviews are done, what would the merit impact be? I would assume the COLA would be first. Merit would be secondary to that.
Why do we differentiate between COLA and merit?
That three, don't I don't know. That, that was, that was part of that discussion this last.
Did talk about it, yeah.
I, I, it makes no sense to me. I've seen, I, I've been looking for it. I can't find it. I've seen something in a policy or in ordinance that basically said there's a COLA and then there's a merit. Is a city slash state employee thing?
Originally, when, when Lori was recommending that she was talking about bonus. And, and so that there would be a COLA increase and then a one-time bonus. And then it was brought up that, no, let's give a COLA and a merit because then the base rate goes up instead of one time. You're now accelerating the whole thing. So if you give a uh merit increase before you do the COLA, then it's going to increase the percentage on the COLA as well. My concern here is we don't even know what those numbers are. We, we have a COLA of $10,780 or a merit of $10,780. And we have 3.5% COLA to city staff. And we don't know that that's going to be um distributed evenly. Everybody gets 3.5%? And some people get merit, some people don't. Everybody gets a little merit? I, I don't know what we're doing here. And short of that, it's hard for me to, to recommend just authorizing that. And back to the question we had, Councilmember Alders. What is the distinction between a whole and a merit? And the understanding I had, as I recall from our discussion, was the bonuses that Lori had recommended aren't typically given in public. She recommended to begin with and came back and say, I don't think we normally do that in public sector, so we go with merit increase. But what is the criteria for a merit increase? We don't have steps. We don't have you know, longevity. So what, what criteria are we using to say you get a percentage of this 10.8 thousand? So what I would like to recommend is, is we take a look at at the 2023 package. We take a look at where we actually compensated people. We take a look at what the COLA increase would do and we have a discussion on the merit. And, and I would recommend that we get that done and then we make the COLA retroactive to uh first pay period in January. And the merit, once we understand what it is, uh after the reviews are completed.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Flattball.
Will we be doing this as another workshop with personnel, um second phase of the personnel policy? Or maybe?
Once it makes sense. If we have questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
So my understanding when we have these previous discussions that the COLA was set, that the percentage was set by the council. That COLA was for the cost of living increase and the merit that we talked about, and I specifically remember I was talking about giving the city administrator, I've seen recognized folks that were doing well on their, on their annual review, if you will. And to be able to have the flexibility to change, um that there would be differences between um the level of performance that they had. So the COLA is when the merit was to, to reward people for going above and beyond and be doing a good job and there would be flexibility within that dollar bond. And that was based on two and a half percent of our record. We'll set aside for that. That was my understanding of the conversation that we had here as a council.
Yeah, I guess my, my put is do we need though? So why can't we just say, here's your merit awards for the year? And it's going to be if the council decides that as a city, we can afford X number of dollars, or if we look at it based off of hey, we want to do a standard we want to do a mid-max, we give Scott a range and we can work with a 3 to 5% increase and as long as he hits the average number, let him distribute. I just don't, you know, so cost of living is three and a half. So when, when it goes the other way, do we ask for money back? We, you know, we never do that. So why are we calling it a cost of living? And last year, cost of living was substantially higher and we didn't do, we didn't align it to an index. So I, but I'm not familiar, I'm just not familiar with why you do that versus why you call it a merit and merit is based on what is the prevailing way, not prevailing, what is the what is the wage for a light job in a different city or a light job in a different community or a light job in the private sector? And are we trying to be aligned with other cities? Are we trying to be 90%? Are we trying to be 105% of where other cities are at? And adjust it to that and then some years there is no adjustment. Some years, there may be more than 3%. Versus a straight, well, we think the consumer index went up 3.1, so everyone gets 3.1.
That's my input. Mayor, thoughts?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, uh hold on, I'm on social security. I'm trying to think of what my phone was.
8.2.
Right, right. And is the COLA, is that the COLA for people who we see part timers? Or just, are we just talking this stat?
No, see, that's, that's, that's part of what's missing here because we did this previously and we had seasonal people getting a percentage and, and you know, I think we just need to take a look at what are we paying people and where does this where does this fit? Now to Jason's point, if, if we're, if we're trying to be competitive at one level. You know, we've had some of this before and we get compared to Yezetta and people with sewer and water and people with completely different uh requirements. But you know, where, where do our current staff sit? And, and so I think the idea with the merit was to give Scott some opportunity to rather than give everybody a flat increase.
Yeah.
Say, and then obviously, the more you make, 3.5% is a lot more for somebody on the upper scale than on the beginning scale. And, and what may be significant on a merit increase on one end is going to be difference on the other. So that was giving Scott some flexibility. I think that's why we settled in on, on merit. And again, this is a 6% increase. If you take two and a half and three and a half, so we're sitting at 6%. And, and again, in this case, 3.5% is not far off from the indices, indices. Um some years, like last year, uh we did, I think 5%, which was still low compared to the indices last year. And so we type it into the problem or consistent with people who really pay. And the question is what does this look like with real numbers? And to the point, does everybody get? And people that just got hired in the front office, are they getting a percentage increase already? And people that just got hired in the front office, are they getting a percentage increase already? And that's what I would like to see. And like we say, once that's resolved, then whoever's getting the, the increase is having to be retroactive. If it's going to stay as a merit based on our reviews and adjusting compensation, so we're competitive in that category. Then that would be based on, that would come in after the reviews are done. But we keep it as this, cost of living and merit. Cost of living would be, once we know what it is, dollar wise, everybody. Then that would be retroactive. Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Brad. Administrator Lainer said we should know, I was wanting to clarify, but shaking, no shaking headwind.
So I, I wasn't necessarily looking at COLA. COLA is a percentage of what was made for previous years. So when we sat with Lori, you take 3% of, I'll use me, for example, whatever that dollar amount was last year. And 3% would be added to it and we put in, into the budget. You do have flexibility to be able to move COLA, which I've been working on already. Uh, but I wasn't looking to take two people that we just hired, uh, part-time and, and go to that. We, when we sat down with Lori, we based it out full-time and it's fully, and it's based on what they made last year. So 2023 wages were taken for budgeting purposes and put 3.5% to it. And then that's in the 2024 budget, the correct, not the merit. And that was just a standalone, the understanding, my understanding was that merit would be used for employees across the board to be able to recognize. And, and that I would have some recommendations into that and, and, uh, and go that last year when we went through the, the COLA increase, uh, it was based the same way. And I have the flexibility to move with COLA. Uh, but if you're taking a little bit to, for, to use the mayor's example, if you're trying to adjust numbers a little bit to make sure that your public works folks were a little more aligned with maybe some of the, the competition out there, um, to be able to do that, then somebody has to donate to the pool to be able to, to do that, right? Uh, so this year, when we sat down and talked about, we said, okay, this is kind of where we are with the cost, the cost of living, but the percentage is in there. And then had a different light item that we budgeted the same, this is what we could use for high performers. And maybe there'd be a reduction for some of the folks that weren't quite there. But my goal wasn't to go in and have two part-time employees and looking at increasing their wages right now. That was not the intent, from my perspective, it's my perspective.
And that's, that's what we experienced in the past is seasonal workers got bumped, uh, brand new part timers got bumped. And so we don't have that supporting documentation with this saying, here's where people were, here's what 3.5%. You know, again, as, as we always say in the budget cycle, this is a placeholder to be determined six months or so later.
Yeah.
You know, inflation was going like last year, I think this would be a big bump. I think it's appropriate for what the indices are saying right now, if it seems like an appropriate bump. But what does that look like in real numbers? And where, where were people at last year? What was their total compensation? And what would it look like this year?
I want to be a little cautious on the total compensation because we offer a benefits package. If someone chooses not to take life, health, whatever, um, that doesn't mean we should perpetually increase their wage because they are taking some of the benefits because they can choose to take them at any time on a yearly basis. So it's, here's the benefit package, which is a portion of your overall compensation package. And here's the compensation piece and they should be treated separately. The compensation piece, in my opinion, should be based off, what are we paying versus what do we think the industry is paying and where do we want to be at? And then we can factor in some, hey, we think we may be different this because it's now been a this and this. Or here's our attrition and we want to make sure we're hand managing attrition, which I think our attrition is zero. But we want to look at that as well so that we can attract and retain the best employees. And we focus in on our full-time employees and the seasonal help. It's like, I think we look at that and say, it's a straight wage every year. And it's like, I don't know that if you work at Target one year, you automatically get a raise for coming back the next year. Because you're a seasonal worker. And we should treat a seasonal worker as a, here is what we're paying for seasonal type help.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Ryan.
I agree with when it comes to the Rollers, when you look at compensation, whether an employee takes that piece of it or not, shouldn't factor in. This is what we offer for all employees. If they chose to take it, they, they take it, if they don't, they don't. But what is the compensation package for employees? I believe that when I asked about part-time, I didn't ask that, because I don't think they should be included. I believe that should be included. Uh, I don't think our hiring wages for all that high-end part-time, I think we want to keep up quality people. And they shouldn't consider their, their COLA increases, um, seasonal. I don't believe that that should go on, what is our, what is our existing seasonal wage? But I do believe we need to look at what our seasonal wages are in order to get good candidates to come in during the summer to work in the parks. If it's on the roads, one, uh, job, you know, to give them quality. But that's another piece, but I would not say that merit or, uh, COLA would be part of that seasonal. That is something we deal with on a regular time. And, and I did not mean to say that I, uh, do not think that the part-timers should not, should be excluded in the COLA. But I do think it's important, as the man says, is that we, we have that whole picture. What, what is it, who is going to run up the house? And, and so we are more comfortable with how we, what we are offering to our employees. And I, I'm not, you know, I, I believe our employees should be paid fairly. But we as a council are responsible for making sure what we're doing is correct. And, um, it is, uh, one is rightfully employees and I'm still going to give it tax.
Any other, you guys say something? Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Brad.
I think part of this comes into, we had these numbers when we were doing the budgeting. And it's been, and it, getting number, getting the information that we want out of Lori's spreadsheet um, potentially would basically come, come into play now. Because I know on Lori's spreadsheet, it said, here's what they're told, here's what there, there was a, the 23 amounts were, and here's what the COLA increase would be. But we don't have, we don't have that at our fingertips right now. And, and, and I know we, you know, we talked about it at length about what the number should be. And that we, we, we can do a COLA and plan on a COLA and we put in a budget for COLA. Um, I'm just wondering if we can, if we can come to something where we can take care of, maybe if, I would, so if we're specifically saying all the full-time and full-time staff would be getting the COLA, as I understand it? Does that include e- everyone who's currently full-time? Um, if that, I think that what we already, we had in the budget for it, it seems that the market, the, the mark, we're within the market as far as that goes. So I'm just curious if that part could be taken care of and then we can work and then figure out how to handle the, the specific merit increases. I would agree, we can easily go back, we can always go back and review how our compensation structure works to make it make more sense and then fit with the times and all that kind of thing.
Well, what would you think about my proposal is, let's take a look at, you know, we, we were talking in September about numbers that we were projecting. Let's take a look, we have the actual gross pay for 2023 for everybody. We have the current hourly wage for everybody. We would know then what the, uh, 3.5% would be, merit is staying for everybody, not just full timers. What if we had that information there in front of us so we actually had real numbers to look at and say, this makes sense? Then we can talk about that merit part saying, looking at the total picture here, we need to do something more than this. To be competitive with what was only wanted to be. But right now, we're, yes, because we have no numbers to turn. Councilor Brad.
We have to do the second part of the personnel policy anyway. So we could table this and help and do that, that. Because we seem to be going back and forth on numbers and then, and we don't have the numbers in that one.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Ray.
The council number is what, well, I, I, I think you don't need to, if staff can provide that to us and we have it in our February meeting, we can make a decision then. I mean, and maybe that's unrealistic, they can get, you can put together by then. We have all the new numbers and the other thing too is the 23 compensation is going to be different than your 24 because now we're offering additional benefits to 24 that weren't to 23. So, and that's, we, to, to compare a 23 top, uh, uh, a benefit package to, is not really realistic because we weren't offering all of the additional things that we are in 24.
I think we, we, we decided though not to include the benefits part of it, just the wage.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Because part of the benefits, we have to have 100% participation, others is voluntary.
We can have to be that big office, right? But I, I would, I mean, staff controls, they could have that, who's my third problem? We're all about, go down on the, whatever, what is the administrator's suggestion for COLA based on the, the different levels of employees we have? Their suggestion, what did the benefits reviews come back and what he thinks for merit increases for whichever employees? Have that to us in February, in, what on February? And it could be, COLA could be retroactive to January 1 and merit could be retroactive to the employee, uh, review date.
Scott, I'm going to ask you a question. On the, the $10,780, where, what was that based on? Is that, is 2.5% of what, you know?
The 2023 salary, if you know, hourly wages. Yeah, just like three and a half for the COLA was based on that, two and a half was based on, we'll say no.
Right, the across-the-board number was a lot higher and we talked through it and decided to have a merit. So we cut back on the COLA to, to make sure that there were some ones available with the merit. Well, that's what's my understanding.
That's my understanding, okay?
So success for Scott next month looks like what? He's going to fill the nerve, what data?
Mr. Mayor. So, so as far as the numbers go, that, uh, Councilmember Ray goes question and maybe some of your other question or others have the same question. The 3.5% COLA is in the budget numbers for 2024, so that's a simple number to be able to get you. I mean, you can, you could take a look at it. On that same spreadsheet, when you take a look at 2024 budget with some of the things that would be an asset one, it does have the total compensation package on there also. What hasn't, what's in the budget but hasn't been specified is what we want to do with that merit increase. And that's before, that's on the performance evaluation. And then the other thing I'm going to need to understand then from the council is, are we thinking that we're going to do something with part-time employees? Because we initially brought these part-time employees and added an hourly wage that we were comfortable being at for more than a month. You know what I mean? So I don't necessarily agree that we need to necessarily look at something, right? Do this quickly, but, uh, I'll do whatever, as always, whatever you guys want me to do. But that was kind of my idea going into it, was the 3.5% and then doing the reviews and then compensating people fairly with that merit increase. Taking into consideration what the mayor's talking about, you know, where our public works folks are, where others were. That was just my idea going into it. Last year, when I went into doing reviews and giving, we just had the COLA to work with, but we still did the same thing. We still adjusted if we needed to. Some got a little bit higher percentage depending upon where they were on the pay scale. Some of them got a lower percentage depending upon where they're on the pay scale. But I had less to work with because we just had that, 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 that one piece, if you will. And I think, I think the mayor, I think it was like 105%.
The, uh, the understanding with the, the new employees is we would look at their performance at their six-month review. And if we, you know, that's where we evaluate, does this make sense to have an increase based on how they're actually performing? So I think prior to that, it would be a mistake, think somebody was, was brand new and, and bump them automatically. So I, I think to, uh, to Scott's point, that wasn't what I was expecting. And we would, that, that's where we kind of got lost before, seasonal helpers and part-timers hitting a bunch of psych. Uh, so what does it look like back to Jason's point? I think what I would like to see, so we have some point of reference, a lot of context, I, I struggle. What were the, what are the current 2023 wages for all employees? What was the gross pay for 2023 strong employees? And then what does, what do those wages look like? Not in the, the gross numbers like you're talking about here, the total 3.5%. But what does each of those positions look like with a 3.5% increase? And then knowing that we budgeted, I always want to have this caution because we do this every year. We budget it, it's not a guarantee. But we budgeted 2.5% or some type of merit increase. And you'll be doing, we'll be completing the reviews coming up, so you can say, here's my recommendation for merit increases. So we can take a look at, okay, here's their current wage with the 3.5% and your recommendation for merit. Are they competitive? That makes sense to the council?
And the scope is our full-time hourly team members. Seasonal workers are out of scope, part-time employees are out of scope. Is there a, um, is there a way when we get done with this adjustment? We could see how we compare to either other cities or private sector to see how, where we are in terms of where does our pay fall in relationship to our peer group?
And that's, that's what we tried to do in the past. We've got to pick the right cities. And again, picking cities that are, and commensurate, commensurate responsibilities. So we're not looking at full sewer and water, we're not looking at full build-out, we're not looking at, we're saying these are, these are commensurate with our respective values.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. This would be great to understand when we get done, do we think we are right in line with the rest of the cities? Are we way ahead of our peer group or are we, we way behind our peer group? And that may drive some additional action to your earlier point on, do we think, or do we think we're compensating our team for, um, white work in another city thing? Or do we think we're ahead of the curve, right in line and we're great? And if that's the case, then these numbers make good. If that's, if we're way behind, we may choose some additional action.
Yeah, and, and, you know, the fact that we've got, well, since we have that, it, it makes sense to say, where, where do we actually fit and what do I do about?
Yeah.
And it starts with actually having actual numbers. Where do we end up 2023? Individually and collectively.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Brad.
So going forward, so are we going ahead in the February meeting? And do you know what you need for us for that?
I think so, I got notes here and I'm sure Natalie's got notes there. Like I said earlier, I think some of it's already in the numbers, so that should be pretty.
Yeah, we, we should have the 2023 wages. We have the 2023 gross pay. And, and we could take all the wages and put the multiplier on it. And that's, you know, it's going to be great.
So 2024 budget's got the multiplier in it.
I was talking about the individual one.
Yeah, that's the base, yeah.
How individually we compare with life jobs.
So we're going, so to clarify, we're just going to be looking at other cities to, to make sure that we are what we're.
Sorry, I think we got to, I was going to pick a little light on to get that comparison piece.
Then you have to find the right cities.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I was wondering, are we doing this for the February meeting, but we're having all this done there?
I think, I think this, this part, the COLA.
Right, COLA and the merit and the.
The COLA, yes. The merit, Scott's still got to do reviews and make recommendations on that. And then he'll come in with the merit. Then we take a look at how they compare elsewhere. Because that, that, that's something if we have to go up, we haven't budgeted. If we're already up and we want to stay there, and we, you know, that's sort of like we mean our budget discussions for twenty twenty-four. We're not going to go backwards on anybody in twenty twenty-four. But if, if we have it and we go out there and we find out after we've done COLA and merit and we're still moved, we want to do something about that, then we, we start taking a look. But I don't think that should hold up the increases while we make some.
And that's what I was wondering. So are we giving, are we going ahead with approving this for Scott to go ahead and do what he needs to do and.
So I, I will make a motion to follow up with the staff, divide us with the individual twenty twenty-three wages. The individual twenty twenty-three gross pay. The three point five multiplier on those twenty twenty-three wages, so we can see where everybody is individually. And I'll move that Scott, as part of his review, makes a recommendation on adjustments based on merit. Because Scott's got a pretty good idea where his staff is. He may not have all the numbers from laboring cities, but he's got a pretty good idea where his staff is. He, he talks to numerous cities and, and counties, so he has some idea.
Mr. Mayor. So for a month, just, we, are we going to we're not going to go over individual employees' wages in here, are we?
We will have that. It's public information.
Is it public?
Yeah, okay. Gross. We, we can't do deductions.
All right.
As long as it's gross pay, it'll be public. Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Brian is first.
I know when we talked about doing other cities, we've always had to do wage studies in the past. I mean, do we think, are we in a position where we're comfortable with having that information or that we can gather it on our own, or are we going to have to do an actual officially wage study to do the comparison? Because that's, to your point, that's always been the issue where you pick, you go by population, but you're in, you're in the middle of Penopin County and it's completely different or, you know.
And what I identify what compared.
Right, so that information might not be available by the February timeframe.
Right, what I'm saying is the COLA goes forward based on the numbers we have. Um, merit, Scott will make recommendations. The overall adjustment is going to be more significant information.
But are we going to be able to gather, are we going to, do we have enough resources to gather that in-house is what I'm trying to get at? Or are we going to have to go through an official wage study that we've done several times in the past?
That I don't agree, okay. I don't think it holds these two up, no.
Right, just making, I'm just making sure because I know we were talking about studying and.
Yeah, what's the study we got to do, Natalie?
It's, uh, fair, it's making sure that genders are paid equally. I can't remember the exact name of it, but it's that female employees are paid.
Pay equity.
Yes, pay equity, that's what it was.
So I think that's due this year.
Oh, it's due like in four or five days or something, about fifteen.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
We, we talk part-time employees and what I just plugged into me is, I look at calendar. We have two part-time employees. One will have been with us a year in January and the other one is a year in May. Uh, I, I believe that they are, they're looking for what they're doing at the discipline center and they should be considered for, at a minimum of a COLA rate. I, I can, I can understand two new hires that, that I can aside, but these other two have been with us. They've done a good job. And, uh, I believe that at a minimum of a COLA rate for that.
Staff thinks they have money at the budget for that, so we'll, we'll let them make recommendations. Any other? I brought, so my motion, I'll say on the second, so. Councilmember Alders, second. Any other discussion? Being in the area now, Councilmember Alders.
Hi.
Councilmember Brian.
Hi.
Councilmember Flatt.
Hi.
Councilmember Rainbow.
Hi.
Eric Pilon, hi. Motion carries. One more thing, the election.
Uh, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Brian. The, the question brought up earlier, I was just curious, I mean, if we, because we don't know about that fourth, if the potential of it, there would be a fourth or not. Is there a way that we can have that included in the, the trading of services so that we don't have to come back and try to fix it later? If, if, if that's a possibility or not. I don't know dollar for dollar if one's more favorable than the other, but I'm, I'm guessing that the Northern Alliance is probably more than amenable to have hosting us that fourth time?
They are. Okay, it just depends upon when the date will be and if the church is already busy or not.
Okay, so what, so.
So my understanding from Tom, Councilmember, is that there's a couple of different options. One, they could do it with the primary. Two, they could combine it just for others.
This primary?
Yes. Yes, in August. Um, but then they were also talking about possibly doing it like at one other location, kind of like they do the schools. So are, we don't have to do the schools yet? Or third, the other option is every jurisdiction will have to hold their own. And they don't know what it will be, but he is pushing, uh, very, very hard for the primary.
Great. Can we include, if the possibility is that we have to host a fourth election, that we can include it in this?
I could include it in the trade. However, depending upon the date, I think we need to make sure.
It's great, I just don't.
From the point of this.
Yes.
This, uh, motion. That we will include it. We just have to find the, the actual date.
Yeah.
So you'll confirm that, although it's important, but you'll confirm that, that they're open to that arrangement?
Yes.
If it's, the church is available and where it's needed.
If it works and they're available to host, then it's included in access, I guess. We have a simple way of saying that.
And Adrian and I have talked about it, so we're assuming that it'll be a Tuesday again, hopefully. And then it won't be an issue. If they move it to some other kind of date and they've already got functions there, then we're going to have to figure out some.
Yeah, and they like to keep elections on Tuesday, that's right, yeah. Yeah, water shit loves it. And then I'll talk to Terry because there is a conflict on the twenty-three.
Yes, there is.
He's okay.
But, okay, and he needs to come in and talk to me and get on the calendars.
Yeah, yeah, we're, Scott and I are meeting with Terry next week, after a couple of weeks, whatever, yeah.
All right, so with that said, I'll take a motion on the request for council action on swapping resources with the Alliance Church for the election, if you so feel.
Mr. Mayor.
Go, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Flatt.
I make a motion that we issues the swapping of resources with the Alliance Church.
All right. Allowing trading of resources.
Or, I should say, approving, approving request. Resolution two zero two four, allowing the trading of resources with the Northern Alliance Church as stated above.
End of matter.
End of matter. End of matter.
We have a motion from Councilmember Flatt, second. Second, Councilmember Brian. Any other discussion? Anything, Councilmember Rainbow.
I just want to thank staff for coming up with this. This was a really good idea, to be a partner with a community organization. Yeah, but, and the outcome benefits both, both parties. So that was good work on that.
It's, it's nice to have a partner we can work with, the church too, Natalie and Adrian, and communicate so well and follow through on it. Kudos to both.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
We have to vote first.
Yes, we do. Councilmember Alders.
Hi.
Councilmember Brian.
Hi.
Councilmember Flatt. Councilmember Rainbow. Eric Pilon, hi. Motion carries.
Motion, Adrian.
Second.
We have a motion to second.